Welcome to this meeting of Dundee City Council, which is being held remotely in terms of Section 43 of the Local Governance in Scotland Act 2003. All members in attendance are able to fully participate in the meeting, which is being recorded. Should any member need to leave the meeting for any reason, can they please use the chat to advise of this? If a member loses their connection, they should make every effort to rejoin the meeting. But if this is not possible, the Committee Services Officer will note their absence for the remainder of the meeting. If you have to leave the meeting due to a declaration of interest, you must remain out of the meeting until invited back in. Would all members please mute their microphones when not speaking to avoid background noise and turn off any smart speakers? Please start the meeting with your camera on. Your face will appear on the screen when you're speaking. If your connection is poor, you may wish to turn off your camera to see if this improves matters. If this doesn't help, you may wish to quickly leave the meeting and rejoin. If you wish to raise a point of order, ask a question, speak on any item or move a motion or amendment, please use the chat when the relevant item is called. The convener will then invite you to speak. Would members of the press and public please not post messages in the chat? Where items are for noting or where there has been no disagreement expressed, the convener will call for any member who has a contrary view to indicate this through the chat, otherwise the item will be agreed. Please would members not use the chat for any other purposes as those joining the meeting by telephone cannot see the chat and therefore will not be able to follow the debate? Although we are operating in a different way, this is still a formal meeting of the council and the required standards of behaviour and discussion are the same as in a face-to-face meeting. Standing orders will apply to the proceedings and the terms of the councillor's code of conduct will also apply in the normal way. Does any member have any queries regarding this procedure? There are no queries, Lord Provost, so I will now ask the Committee Services Officer to take a roll call for the minute. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I've now taken a roll call for a minute and I would ask if members could confirm that they are present when I call their name. Lord Provost?
Present.
Chancellor Alexander?
Good evening, I'm here.
Chancellor Anderson?
Present.
Deputy Lord Provost Curdell?
Present.
Eili Dawson?
I'm here.
Chancellor Unackla?
Here.
Chancellor Flynn?
Good evening, present.
Chancellor Hunter?
Good evening, present.
Chancellor Lynn?
I'm here.
Eili Roberts?
Good evening, I'm here.
Chancellor Rome?
Good evening, present.
Eili Soares?
Yes, I'm here.
Chancellor Short?
Chancellor Short? I'm also here, sorry. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Chancellor Smith?
I'm here.
Chancellor Tolland?
Hiya, yeah, I'm here.
Eili Keenan?
Present.
Chancellor Crookshank?
Present.
Chancellor Finnegan?
Here.
Chancellor McHugh?
Present.
Chancellor McCurvin?
Present.
Chancellor Malone?
Present.
And I've received apologies from Chancellor Scullin. Chancellor Shears?
Present.
Eili Wright?
Present.
Eili MacPherson?
Good evening, present.
Chancellor Coleman?
Good evening.
Chancellor Creighton?
Present.
Chancellor Duncan?
Here.
Eili Scott?
Here.
And that concludes our call. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to City Council.
Thank you, Lord Provost. Lord Provost, members of the council, there is one item of business this evening, Item B, the minutes for information and record purposes.
See any hands or anything on the chat? Is this agreed? Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Provost. That concludes the business of the City Council. The next meeting is the Community Safety and Public Protection Committee meeting.
Sorry, I couldn't get my computer to start up. So, good evening and welcome to Minute Safety and Public Protection. Billy, do you want to take us through the agenda?
It's me, it's Arlene that's doing it.
Sorry, Arlene, I don't even see you on the screen.
That's okay. Item one, declaration of interest. Are there any declarations?
I'm not seeing anybody.
Okay, we'll move on to Item Two, Scottish Fire and Rescue Service Quarterly Performance Report, first of July to 30th of September 2022. You have a report before you.
Thank you. First of all, I'm going to give you all the information. Graeme Smart, it's his last evening with us. He plans on retiring after tonight's meeting. So I think we're all going to miss you, Graeme. They're far too young to be retiring. You'll probably find you've not got enough hours in the day for to do everything that you need to do. So good luck with your retirement. So we're going to start with our report. So Graeme, are you taking us to start this one?
Thank you, Christina. I think Eric Commander Sharp's going to start and then I'll do my usual, I'll just go into more detail within the report. So I'll hand over to Eric Commander Sharp just now and he can introduce himself to you all. Thanks, Graeme, and thanks for that, Christina. That was lovely, you mentioned Graeme retiring to the group there. I think it's only worthy that I note that my sincere thanks and gratitude to Graeme. And I think he's done about three decades in diligent service to communities of Dundee and the wider Scottish Fire and Rescue Service. So I'd probably summarise with that, it was only right to come in at the back of you with that, I think. So, good evening, everyone. My name's Jason Sharp. I'm the newly appointed local senior officer for Perth, Cynross, Angus and Dundee. As Graeme retires, we also have Graeme's replacement on the call tonight. And I'm really pleased to introduce Paul Robertson as the replacement for Graeme, so he's on the call tonight as well. This has been my first scrutiny meeting. Aware, there has also been a lot of operational activity that members will be aware of in the recent weeks, coupled with the wider operating environment that we're all working within. I've got some significant challenges. We are also in the, I'm very aware of got the local fire rescue plan, which was approved in 2020. Just for your information, we are in the process of reviewing this. We have a view to making it more bespoke and current within this area. As you're aware, you've seen this report before. It provides a significant amount of detail. It's broken down as an analysis of the data within the reporting period. In addition, there are sections that are included to provide members with an overview of a range of our community safety engagement events and other partnership working. As you're aware, all of our six priorities remain a real focus for Scottish Fire and Rescue Service. You'll also be familiar with the summary dashboard on page eight and performance highlights on page nine. It's not my intention to talk through these in any great detail. Graeme may do so, pull the couple out just to talk through. We've all identified that accidental dwelling fires are down. Activities that we've been embarking on to accomplish this is we've completed over 400 home fire safety visits, of which 192 were targeted within high-risk premises and with 179 targeted at medium-risk premises. Addition to this, we've got significant work ongoing with partners on referrals, et cetera, to identify high-risk and medium-risk premises. Colleagues, you will have seen unwanted fire signals have increased. We currently investigate and seek improvement at every unwanted fire signal to hopefully see an improvement on this in quarter three scrutiny. You'll see our delivered primary fires to date have increased also. We've increased our prevention work in this regard as well as sharing intelligence with our partners. You'll see Graeme's included an overview of an incident within Appendix Two, and that's in page 22, regarding an incident in Douglas Street, Dundee, for your scrutiny. As mentioned in my initial words, there's been significant activity over the last few weeks, which members may have some questions on, just to give you some assurance, these will be covered in detail in the quarter three report, which will include our activities around the bonfire period, a significant fire within Blair Gowry and severe weather activities from the weekend. Assuming you've had an opportunity to read our report, I will invite my colleague Graeme Smart in to pull any further highlights or narrative out prior to opening up for further questions. Okay, thank you, Eric Commander Sharp, and good evening, everyone. I'll try my absolute hardest not to mention retirement again. So promise that's the last time. So in terms of the performance report, I'd just like to expand, as I usually do, on some further specific areas within the report. So again, as Eric Commander's just talked about there on some of the headline indicators on page eight of your meeting pack. Again, it is pleasing to note that we've got a continued reduction in particular actually on accidental dwelling fires and non-fatal casualties. We've got a 20% reduction in these fires occurring from the previous quarter. And if you look in further detail and you'll actually find this on page 11 of the combined report, we've also got a 20% reduction against the three-year average year-to-date figure. So it's not just an encouraging reduction in the short term, but also over the longer term as well. So again, from an accidental dwelling point of view, it is particularly encouraging. In addition to that, we have no fire deaths for this quarter. Although again, I think I mentioned this obviously at Q1 report, the previous two fire deaths earlier from June this year, unfortunately have taken us over the zero target policy that we obviously have in trying to pursue zero fire deaths. Just on that, in terms of the additional two that we've had, you'll probably be aware that we had an evaluation of the work that was undertaken in the recent thematic review of fire deaths in the city. And that was following three fire fatalities that we had during 2020 and 2021. These involved three separate incidents involving elderly people. Again, different aspects, but there were obviously similarities within these incidents as well and trends came out of that. So in terms of that evaluation, just for your interest, we undertook this review over the summer months during quarter two with a workshop actually held on three different occasions down at the City Churches, Dundee Stipple. Two were face-to-face with frontline practitioners. And then we also held an online event involving all the three local authority areas across Tayside. It was particularly well received. And then a report was provided also to the Chief Officers Group recently as well. Was some of the key achievements being mentioned in there, including guidance on specialist equipment that can be provided, especially in relation to the trend of the elderly people that were involved. Linkage to the use of emollient creams again, because that has a specific impact, which we're now becoming more and more aware of again across agencies there. And there's a lot of awareness that needs to be shared out. We've got improved recognition now of fire risk factors and demographics across the partnership. So again, all of this work is really encouraging as we move forward and try and prevent any further fire fatalities in the city. So as I mentioned, there was no incidents at all involving fatalities. Also for non-domestic buildings, which again, if you look on back on page eight there, you'll see that HI five and HI six and also zero non-fatal casualties as well in non-domestic fires. So these are currently showing green, which is very encouraging. Road traffic collisions have increased slightly from the same period last year, with the year-to-date figure currently exceeding the target set, which why that's currently showing red. Again, encouragingly, we've had zero fatalities and obviously a slight reduction as well in non-fatal casualties during the quarter. Eric Commander Sharp also commented earlier on the unwanted fire alarm signals. We're sitting amber at the moment in terms of the annual target set with that. And again, we're keeping a close eye on that just now. And again, if you look further on in the report on page, just bear with me, on page 17 of your report, that'll give you a breakdown of the five key property types of the type of premises that we tend to experience, these types of calls. Last area again, in particular, and is a bit of a challenge to address ongoing. However, we have had an increase from the same period last year. In respect of that though, we do have a reduction in secondary fires from the last quarter, which is encouraging. And that links in with a lot of the work that was undertaken again on page 21 of your report, in Appendix One with the Community Safety Engagement programmes and specifically for the quarter that we're reporting on tonight with the summer thematic action plan. That details some of the involvement that we've had, not only just within the Scottish Fire and Rescue Service, but more importantly, working along with all our partners in all the different ward areas to try and obviously reduce these incidents occurring. And the key importance really is the intelligence sharing, again, which Eili Commander Sharp mentioned earlier on with our partners. And we do these predominantly during the multi-agency tasking and coordinating meetings or MATAC. So again, with a focus to address antisocial fire-related activity. And that's really all I really wanted to comment on the main report itself. As Eric Commander Sharp commented in terms of the notable incidents, we have had some significant activity over the last few weeks. I have no doubt there will be some very, very keen interest within that. And I would urge you to give us the opportunity to provide that detailed report to you in Q3. And also that will provide a lot of the detail in terms of Bonfire Night and the run-up to Bonfire Night, which I know that our colleagues in Police Scotland will provide you with some detail in terms of their activity as well. So with that in mind, I would like to welcome any questions from the elected members. Thank you.
Graeme, can I ask you a quick question? The property types that you mentioned on page 17, you're saying the halls of residence are primary schools and then universities. Was there any from the secondary schools?
Yes, there was. I don't have that exact number, but yeah, the actual breakdown. What I tend to do in the report is provide the highest five effectively. And it tends not to change a huge amount. It's normally historically the ones that do chop and change are the educational premises. But in this particular one, yes, we don't have secondaries in there. So there has been a reduction in that, which is encouraging.
We have a question from Daniel, please.
Thank you, Madam Cavina. And just to wish you, Graeme, on behalf of the Liberal Democratic Group, a very happy retirement and congratulations both to Jason and Paul on their appointments to their respective roles. Look forward to working with you. I'm sure all members of this committee would wish to thank the Fire and Rescue Service and other emergency responders such as Police Scotland in relation to recent incidents in particular. You can see the huge challenges faced and professionalism shown by the fire and police colleagues at incidents like the recent blaze at the former Robertson's Furniture Store. Pages 12 and 13 of the reports, non-domestic fires are reported. What's the proportion of these in the current and recent years that have been intentional as opposed to accidental? It is also good to note that the Fire Safety Enforcement Officer audit, relevant premises that fall within the scope of the 2005 Act. But could I ask exactly what fits within the scope of the Act and what non-domestic settings do not? Is this an area that may require further additional resource, given large recent fires like at Robertson's and Queen Victoria Works, both empty properties?
Okay, thank you very much for that, Mr Coleman. So in terms of the specific information that you're asking for tonight, I don't actually have that available right now. However, I think we may have mentioned at the previous meeting, you'd requested some information and there's absolutely no problem whatsoever to provide that with you after the meeting tonight. I can get all of that detail for you. What I would perhaps ask is, because you've asked quite a few questions within there and also in terms of obviously the Fire Scotland Act 2005, could I ask you to provide a detailed email with exactly all that information? And I'll make sure that that's provided for you because like I say, it's probably not going to be possible for me to give you a definitive answer right now on that. And if I'm being honest, I don't want to start waffling.
Thank you. I will do that. Thank you.
And we have a question from Michael.
Yes, thanks, Cavina. It's in relation to page 22, Appendix Two. It highlights the very large and worrying incident at the former Queen Victoria Works. My thanks to emergency services and all involved for the professionalism in dealing with the major incident. And my question is more to the council officers than the Scottish Fire and Rescue Service. And Bill MacPherson and I were concerned that since the incident, the boarded-up access door has been bussed open again. We thank the head of planning and economic development for his prompt action to get this secured. Can I ask the head of planning and economic development to give members an update on the process, the progress, sorry, with engagement with the site owners around security and the site more in general for the future and the future of the site? Thank you, Cavina.
Robin, you're here. I could see your name.
Yes, I am, Cavina. Happy to give a short update. We are aware of the ownership and we have reached out to the owners in order to recharge the essential safety works that were carried out after the most recent fire. I'm not sure whether the team had been advised that the boarding up had been removed, but I will check that tomorrow and ensure that it is reinstated. And obviously the cost of that will be recharged to the owner of the site. I think as members are aware, we do wish to see this site redeveloped and potentially as a housing site given its location. And we will continue to engage with potential developers who may wish to take the site on. But I'll come back to members tomorrow with a comment specifically on the latest removal of the protective boarding.
Thank you. The next question is from George.
Thanks, Chair. With relation to the increase in deliberate primary and secondary fires that's within the report, page 19 specifically, it mentions in your performance management text there about preventative work is ongoing. I'm interested in what kind of preventative measures are taking place? Because this is, we've seen increases in the last quarter and this quarter of both primary and secondary. So maybe you could elaborate in a bit more detail for the committee what preventative measures are actually taking place in Dundee?
Thank you very much for your question there. So where I would direct you in particular for this report is what's detailed in Appendix One on page 21. So obviously Q2 is over the summer period and that gives you that breakdown just specifically in terms of the teams that we have locally in the Scottish Fire and Rescue Service, who exactly is involved in terms of the partnership? We have the multi-agency tasking and coordination meetings of the MATAC group as it's known and also our community engagement teams. Now, I can't give you an exact list of everything that goes on every day because I would be here all night trying to explain to you just exactly what was undertaken. There's a massive amount of work that goes on all the time. And I know exactly where you're going with your questioning because of obviously the recent behaviour, because you would think, well, how much more do we need to do? Because we're still getting the increase. It is a challenge, there's absolutely no doubt about that. But one thing that I will say, and hopefully all of my colleagues and partner agencies will support me in this comment, that there is absolutely no one signal agency can overcome this on her own. It is absolutely a multi-agency effort. And again, the information that's provided for you in Appendix One just gives you that overview of exactly what was specifically focused on during the quarter that we're presenting tonight.
So maybe a supplementary chair, please. So yeah, I have read Appendix One and it details who is involved. So for me, is how often are all these external bodies? Meeting the multi-agency, meeting what's the focus on within the city? What are you looking at? Are we looking at education? Are we looking at schools, children? Are we looking at others? I'm just looking to tease you a wee bit. What's the proactive work that's been carried out in quarter two? Considering that quarter one there was an increase, quarter two there's an increase. So I'm just really interested to see what we're doing different that hopefully we'll not see an increase in quarter three?
Yeah, absolutely. And again, I support your question there in that. What if we were able to provide you with more detail of the frequency of the meetings that take place? Then again, it's no problem at all to provide you with that information. And again, what we can do, you know, if you look at the second paragraph there on page 21, we have given you some, because I'm sure that was a previous question from another elected member at another meeting was, would it be possible to have an appreciation of just exactly what's going on in some of the specific ward areas? So again, we've included that in the report. But again, it's absolutely no problem at all to provide you with some more detail in line with the questions that you're obviously asking. So we can take a note of that and provide it for the next quarterly report for you.
Thanks, Chair.
And George, have you got a question?
Thanks, Cavina. George has probably covered most of the questions I was going to be asking. But I suppose in relation to the figures which include major blazes such as the one at the former Melham Brook Street and another at Market Muse near the Museum of Transport. And of course, since the last report was compiled, we've also seen the Robertson's furniture building being destroyed by mindless arsonism. Who is responsible for the unoccupied and often derelict buildings for their adequate security and fire prevention measures? And what is it that can be done to carry out this function effectively? Thank you.
Okay, thanks for your question there. Again, it's probably appropriate here that perhaps some representatives from the council maybe want to comment, Mr Presswood in particular, and maybe again in terms of the specific security. But again, just to go back to again, the multi-agency effort in respect of that, because we have had ongoing challenges. I'll give you another example is the old college site on Constitution Road, which again has presented some challenges there. But there has been some significant efforts during the quarter that we're reporting on tonight. Again, just to make sure that that site is as secure as possible whilst the ongoing discussions continue with the development and the proposed development of that site. But again, it's not just down to one agency who is overall responsible. We all have an ownership in respect of obviously trying to keep these areas as safe as possible, keep them secure so that no one can get in as much as we possibly can and obviously prevent any antisocial fire behaviour occurring in that aspect. So again, I don't know if someone from the council may want to comment in terms of the security in other sites?
Robin?
Happy to do so, Chair. In terms of the council statutory duty, the building standards team have a duty to ensure the safety and security of premises. To give one example, the former Robertson premises, we had to make them secure on a number of occasions. And the costs of those works were recharged to the building owners. So we do have those powers. And I would encourage any member that has concerns about the safety of a building or access to a derelict property to contact myself or the head of planning and economic development in the first instance, and we will inspect. And we will inspect, ensure that the building is safe first of all. And if the building owners are unwilling to make a property safe or to present, prevent access particularly to young people, we can carry out those works and recharge them.
Thanks, Robin. I'm not seeing any other questions, so can we agree this report? I'm seeing heads nodding, so we'll say that's a yes. Thank you, Graham. Enjoy your retirement.
Thank you very much. It's been a pleasure, everyone. Good luck.
Right, Arlene?
Item 3, Dundee local policing area quarterly police report, 1st of July to the 30th of September 2022. You have a report before you.
And we've got Chief Superintendent Davison on the call. So do you want to start us off, Phil?
Yeah, thanks very much, Convena, and good afternoon, everybody. It's good to see you all again. As you know, I'm joined today by Chief Inspector Ross Fitzgerald, again, who you all know as the local area commander for Dundee. Before we introduce the latest quarterly performance report, I would just like to take a short opportunity to highlight to members that the public consultation phase for the development of the Dundee Local Police Plan 2023 to 2026 commenced on the 3rd of November 2022. The local police plan will look to succeed the current version and it explains how we deliver on policing priorities in Dundee over the next three years with these activities in turn contributing to the broader Police Scotland organisational objectives and also supporting the Dundee Community Plan. Developing the plan is offered and it will continue to offer the opportunity to work together with our partners and with communities to understand the priorities and adjust or improve what we do to keep people safe. And the plan has been shaped by a full range of views, data and assessment, and that includes public feedback. You'll align to that, be aware that our local policing teams have been out and about across Dundee engaging with communities over several months now. And we've also been gathering feedback from our Euro Police Survey as well as partner and stakeholder views. And the data assessment and the incorporation of that feedback has therefore informed the draft plan that has now been circulated for consultation and both with the public, with our stakeholders and to elected members. We will continue to develop the plan into its final version and the consultation survey is essentially open from the 3rd of November through till the 12th of February. And feedback can be provided via an online portal or via email. Members should have received a copy of the plan and if you haven't as yet, it will be with you shortly. And I would just ask that you take the opportunity to consider its content and feed comments back as appropriate where your support in this regard is always very much appreciated. And the intention would be that following that consultation period and as we get to the final version of that 2023 to 26 plan, that it will be brought back formally to this committee for consideration by members. So thanks just for bearing with me with that. I was just keen to highlight that formally, that that process is underway. In terms of the policing report presented today, this covers quarter two as per the fire service report against the comparable periods from last year. As per previous quarters, I would continue to advise members that the impact of the pandemic continues to make some year-on-year comparisons challenging due to the varying restrictions at different times. I trust that members have had the chance to read the report and I see a couple of hands up for questions already. So what I will do though, just as we normally do, is to pass to Chief Inspector Fitzgerald, who'll give you a couple of the key summary highlights from the report before we will both take questions. Thanks very much.
Thank you, sir, and good evening, everyone. So just to kind of take you through the summary part of the report so we can allow you to get the questions as soon as possible. Looking at the violence and disorder space, you will note a slight increase in serious assault crimes in comparison to last year to date, albeit a reduction on the numbers across Q1. I can report going into Q3, that number is now reduced to me have actually seen fewer serious assaults in the city at current time of report than we had last year. So a positive kind of improvement in that space as we've gone through the end of Q2 and into Q3. Robberies, again, for the second year in a row, we're seeing solid performance in terms of reduced occurrence rates around robberies with additional kind of gains against last year to date figures seen. In terms of both sets of detection rates, slightly under last year to date at this juncture, albeit within one or two detected crimes of bringing that detection rate back on parity. And we have a number of fairly complex and long length investigations ongoing at the moment, which we're confident will result in those detection rates improving. Just touching on common assault, we see a kind of near static number of occurrence rates in that area. And similarly, a small number of detections required to bring us back to our kind of the levels we would like to see. Positively, around emergency service workers, some significant reductions in occurrence rates in that space with a lot of work done with kind of criminal justice partners, particularly around increasing the use of impact statements in prosecution reports going into COPFS to better let the court understand the impact that such crimes do have on our emergency service workers right across the range of blue light services particularly. So it's a positivity in that space. Into acquisitive crime, again, as we've seen in the summary, a reduction of 21% around domestic housebreakings, although we'd provide the caveat that we have seen an incremental increase in commercial premises being targeted in respect of housebreakings, which is a prevailing theme through from Q1, albeit at slower rates. So still work to do in the housebreaking space, particularly around those kind of commercial premises, which are also linking into some of our motor vehicle crime statistics. Again, reflecting on the Q1 reports, motor vehicle crime still seen at high levels across the city, no doubt impacted by cost of living crisis. And it's a statistic that we are seeing nationally across the board that can provide that bit of reassurance that across Q1, we saw 271 motor vehicle crimes recorded, whereas Q2 we're now at 193. So demonstrating that we are trending in the right direction and the steps that have been taken have been effective in reducing the numbers of crimes across Q2. We hope to continue that into Q3 as we progress through the latter part of the year. Into that road safety space, just reflective of some of the statistics that Scottish Fire and Rescue Service partners have already touched on. So no road deaths in the city thus far this year, which again is clearly very welcome, and a significant reduction numbers of serious injuries from 19 down to 13, which again is a 30% reduction. And again, very welcome in terms of the safety of people using the roads in Dundee. To touch on some of our sexual crime statistics. So across the full range of sexual crimes or group two crimes, we've seen an overall reduction of 16%, which is again positive news with detection rates remaining positive and in line with last year's statistics. And specifically looking at the crime of rape again, further reductions seen with a number of outstanding inquiries on the go, which we are hoping to detect to improve that detection rate as we go forward. And again, just to highlight the significant numbers of those crimes, although recorded within the Q2 statistics and are actually reported historically and may have happened many months or years ago, with the victims only now confident enough to come forward and make those reports. And just lastly, into the drug supply and possession space, contained a number of details of examples of positive enforcement activity across the city within the main bulk of the report. And again, the statistics are there around kind of positive reductions in the numbers of cases submitted and found through stop and search activity and other more intelligence-led operations. So without taking up too much more of your time, that gives a general sense of the statistics. And myself and Chief Superintendent Davison will be more than happy to answer any questions anyone we have.
Okay, we have a case of first.
Thanks indeed, Convena. I have a couple of completely unrelated questions. And the first one is in relation to the statistics on page 29. And the phenomenally impressive detection rate that is actually more than the rate of offences. And I allude to the information in relation to emergency service assaults where the detection rate is 102.7% for last year. And in terms of drink-drug driving, the detection rate is 107.8%. Now, obviously, that can't be accurate. And this is an old one. I raised this and I think it was Andrew Todd who replied to my question, which I raised probably about two or three years ago. And I think what lies behind it is that you're taking a snapshot of a particular period of time and looking at the number detected and the number of offences. But these offences may not have been detected, have taken place in the same time slot as the offences that were detected, if you follow my drift. So my concern about that, as I said to your predecessor at the time, is that in a way, we're comparing apples and pears. We're not comparing the clear-up rate of the actual offences that have occurred in that period, if you follow my drift. And now at that time, Andrew Todd indicated that this was not particularly T-Side Police Division issue. This was more of the way statistics are held within Police Scotland nationally. But I would be, but he did say he would take that further. I think small matters like COVID and other things got in the way since then. So this is not a complaint. But I'm just really wondering if we could maybe get, perhaps Phil or Ross can maybe just give me some comment on that. I'm not suggesting for the moment this aspect can be cleared up tonight. But I do feel it's really important that when we get detection rates, we get the clear-up rate in relation to the offences that are, you know, the crimes that have actually occurred. So we're comparing apples with apples rather than apples with pears, if you follow my drift.
I'll maybe just jump in with that one. Thanks very much for the question and I guess the comments from Andrew Todd previously still largely are the rationale. So the crime system will take that snapshot in time. The vast majority of standard crimes are detectable within the same reporting period. But the nature of some crimes clearly is that it may be some time down the line investigatively till they are detected. So that count or call sometimes has a little bit of a lag to it. And that's particularly the case with, you know, historic sexual crime, for example, which can take lengthy periods to get through. In terms of the actual presentation of them statistically, that is something that I can take back afresh from today and look to push in on. I suspect the way that we are moving forward with our ICT and we're in the rollout of a new national crime system, that that will and should lead us to the position to be able to do more in terms of the statistics that we have within the system. But certainly for now, we're slightly restrained by the way that the stats are gathered and obtained. I hope that helps just give a bit of assurance that I'll take that in with that development of new system, but also just reiterates, I think, the position of understanding that you've had there before.
Okay, thanks very much for that. That's a perfectly reasonable response. Now, fully accept that the vast majority will be included within the same time period. I get that. So it's perhaps not the biggest deal in the world, but it does look a bit bizarre where you see 107% detection rate on crimes. But thank you for the explanation and thanks for taking it forward. And in due course, and perhaps with, you know, ICT improvements, we'll be able to address that. My second question's in relation to page 52 and in relation to speeding offences. And it indicates that during the period under review, speeding offences in Dundee significantly decreased by 79.1%. And suppose the point I would make in relation to that, that's very good news. However, at the end of the day, there would be no speeding offences detected if you didn't do any enforcement. And I know that that's hardly the case. But the point really is that that statistic becomes meaningful when we see the extent of enforcement for each period. Because clearly, the more enforcement you undertake, the more detection that you will find. And I suppose my point in relation to that, now I sense, and I'm only speaking in relation to my own ward in the West End, where police have been very proactive in relation to taking up requests for enforcement at particular locations I and colleagues have raised. So, you know, thank you for that. But I suppose the point, and it's not necessarily for, you know, this report in particular, it's just maybe for the future, it'd be really useful to see the extent of enforcement because that then makes the detection rate more meaningful, if you like.
Counselor, I'll maybe just take that one quickly as well, probably just on a pan T-Side basis, actually. So the extent of activity that we've been applying into road safety has remained high because clearly any death and any serious injury is one too many. And a few pages earlier from that one, you'll see the volume of stops, for example, that has been undertaken across T-Side. So there's some 9,214 stops of vehicles this year, which is an increase in policing activity on the previous year. That is just one example of the highly visible policing presence we've had across our roads. The fact that we're seeing reductions there in serious injuries, that, you know, road deaths for Dundee is that we don't have any. And that driver behaviour is actually showing on that downward trend is really welcome to see. And I think, you know, it's not without quite significant policing presence and activity. So it's hopefully a positive trend of that mix of education, high visibility policing presence and the variety of campaigns that we've been doing.
Okay, I'm grateful for that. I did see the stuff on stops, but I assumed that you may stop a vehicle for reasons other than speeding, as well as those speeding. But, you know, I take your point completely. I think we're all very pleased to see proactivity in this area. As you say, one person killed or seriously injured as a result of inappropriate driving and speeding is obviously one too many. And I'm grateful for that response. So thank you very much.
Convena, I don't know if you're on mute. I don't know if it was Counselor Duncan next?
Sorry, my mic keeps going off and it won't come back on. So yeah, Craig, you're next.
Okay, yeah, thanks, thanks, Convena, thanks. Yeah, just I do have a couple of questions which will come on in a second. But I just wanted to say before I do that I was very grateful of the opportunity to meet with senior officers in my ward last week. Ross Fitzgerald will recall. And we discussed, we had a good discussion about a lot of troubling and unfortunate behaviour in Broughty Ferry. Not unique to Broughty Ferry, but certainly worrying for certain residents in my wards, ranging from antisocial behaviour to out-and-out vandalism and concerning threats apparently uttered against residents. So I think you might be pleased to learn already on the back of that, you know, I've been able to provide some assurance to residents who are, you know, greatly assured that the police are on the case, as it were. So I'm grateful for that. My questions actually are really on page 29, the summary of reports. There's two sort of areas that sort of jump out at me. One would be acquisitive crime, which seems to have gone up by something like 53%. And the other would be, again, acquisitive crime but fraud, 52%. Sorry, the first one was motor vehicle crime, acquisitive crime. I'm just really looking for a bit of explanation around why these statistics have been produced and any actions that the police are taking to try and drive them down.
Counselor Duncan, I can maybe just comment on that. So I think largely the increase in acquisitive crime has been seen nationally on the back of the impact of cost of living crisis. There's no doubt about that. In terms of that motor vehicle crime space, we are seeing kind of several crime series linked to some repeat offenders across the city, where we may see several crimes on the same night and that then takes some time to detect, which has obviously a very clear impact on our performance statistics when reporting on those numbers. And just to pick up on that prevention side, as I said earlier, we have certainly seen a very difficult and demanding start to the year through Q1. But into this report, I've seen in the region of 80 crimes less than Q1 reported in Q2. So I take some confidence from that in terms of the fact that, you know, high visibility patrols, the work of our community investigation units particularly, and the work of our reactive the work of our community investigation units particularly, and the work of our reactive detective inspector, which is focused on acquisitive crime and those offenders who are predominantly involved in that space and repeatedly offending is, is starting to, to take an effect. So there, there is work ongoing as we push into Q3. We will start to look at then our Operation After Dark kind of messaging, make sure we're reflecting those national campaigns across the city and using targeted kind of leaflet drops, interventions and patrols to make sure that our resources are in the right areas at the right time, based on clear analysis of the crimes that have already occurred to try and reduce those numbers further.
Okay, thanks, thanks very much indeed for that. And I'm also obliged to you for drawing attention quite lightly to the, one of the potential causes underlying these figures of the, the, the impact of the, the cost of living crisis, which regrettably, I think probably most of us are only too well aware of, is likely to intensify. So in other words, you, you've got your work cut out for the future. And, you know, I can only hope that the economy, the whole society turns a corner. But at, at the moment, Nero, there doesn't seem to be much prospect of that. So obviously, yeah, the, the police will do the, the best that they can.
And the next councillor is Mark.
Yeah, thanks, Convenor. Just to follow on from Billy McPherson and just acknowledge a fact, it's great to see the amount of speeding in the city reduced. But I think it'd be helpful, brought this up at previous committees, I've got a few questions after this, but brought it with previous committees with the gas of locations and whether it's actually the trunk roads we're talking about rather than actually in the communities. So if we can get more information on that, it would be helpful, but fantastic to see such a reduction. And thanks for your feedback on how it's actually been done. I'd just like to refer to page fifty-two with regards to the, the work that police and DCC enforcement officers are doing around a particular school in Maryfield. Something that my previous locality sergeant did a number of years ago in coal sites in Strathmart. And really successful having the officers from the police and the enforcement team working together to solve the issues of, how you put it, irresponsible parking, et cetera, around the school gate, the school gates. Now, you know, we've actually got our school streets policy in place. And I'd like to again, thank you for your support, as previously mentioned, and making sure this is actually effective. And I hope to see continued support over the forthcoming period as we introduce more streets under this policy and schools across the city. So I hope that's the case. Again, thank you because the safety of the children is utmost the priority here. But can I touch on Operation Close Pass on page fifty-one? You do mention Operation Close Pass, but you don't actually say how often it's actually been used within the city or any results from that. You won't have the information tonight, but could you maybe pass on to the committee, if that's possible, all the details of how often it's actually been instigated across the city? How many, what's the feedback from that, the gas that people spoke to, any offences from that? Because I think that would be really helpful, if that's possible, please.
Yeah, there's no, no problem at all. I think.
Sorry, I don't know if it's going back.
There we are, trying to jump it together. No, just, just to say, no problem. We, we'll take that away. Links very much into Billy McPherson's point from earlier on. I think our road policing teams, our community policing teams and all of those that are involved in our road safety campaigns and local enforcement action clearly detail when they're going to be and where they're going to be. And we will have the ability to come back with some degree of, of, of detail on that. I just don't have it to hand, unfortunately.
No, that's fine. If we get an email, the information later on, it'd be more acceptable. Thank you.
Gotcha. Thanks.
Right, next we've got George.
Thanks, Chair. I've got two questions, Chair, if you will. First one is on the serious assault crime types and the second one's on acquisitive crime similar to what councillor Duncan had highlighted. Serious assaults, eh, as you see, there's a rise has been highlighted today and there's an increase. So, ah, so the question would be, is there an increase nationally or is it a particular Dundee problem? When you look at, you see the indicators of drugs, alcohol, they're, they're worrying indicators. So if that's the, the major factor in these occurring, is this a particular Dundee problem or a Scottish wide issue?
Just to go on, councillor McCovin, so I, I think that the driving factors behind serious assaults and violent crime on the whole are, are seen nationally, particularly within our kind of bigger urban areas where population mass is, is kind of, is targeted. And just looking at the figures, I appreciate the, the increase at the end of Q2. I suppose I would highlight it's an increase of nine crimes. As I say, moving into the Q through period, we, we've actually reversed that trend now and are slightly below last year to date figures. So, so we have responded to that slight increase through Q2 and are seeing more positive figures right across our, our serious and violent crime statistics now. And, you know, I, I don't have a, a specific national comparison for you right now. I can certainly dig that and provide it to you, councillor, out with, out with the meeting. But let's say I'm, I'm reassured by the amount of preventative work that's ongoing. Detection rates are, are challenged, but, but as I say, with the number of ongoing investigations where we are pursuing positive lines of inquiry, I'm equally content we'll see those detection rates rise and two above last year to date figures as we move through the year. So I, I would have to say we've made an absolute priority around serious assaults, particularly and the, the harm that arises from them, the consent of the public and the sense of safety and that comes with crimes of that kind happening in local communities is not lost on us at all. We've got a huge amount of resource put into that area in terms of visible kind of patrolling. A detective inspector for Dundee City for the first time in a long time, who is, is absolutely focused on violent crime to make sure each investigation is robust and thorough and every action is prioritised. And similarly, our Operation Argonite team, we work really closely with the victims of those kind of offences to try and address any vulnerabilities that may make them susceptible to being repeat victims. So that there is a, a divisional and city-based violence action plan in place. It's aligned to a toolkit that gets added to each and every crime and all of that activity together. To my mind, it's providing us a, a strong performance in respect to that kind of particular crime type and robberies as well, where the motivation and drivers is very similar.
Thanks for that. And I, and I suppose I asked the question about where, where does Dundee compare nationally when it comes to serious and violent crime? And it's something that I've raised in previous committees with regards to Scottish comparators. Now, if you view the Scottish Fire and Rescue paper, they're able to provide, and I would imagine with ease because it's, it's provided, the, the rate per ten thousand population. So you could see in an instant where Dundee lies in comparison to Scotland. And I asked at the last committee, and I think I've asked in previous committees, is it possible for us to get this moving forward? I think it would give us a, a, a great insight into where the city is in, 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 in a way, Scottish, Scottish wide comparator. So I, I would ask that, if, if you're able to do that, and I'm sure you can, to, to, to provide that in future reports. It's something Billy McPherson mentioned about detection rates compared apples with pears. But we're able to give a Scottish wide detection rate, but we can't give it for the rate per ten thousand population or the actual recorded crime. So I, I think it would be a benefit for the committee if we see that moving forward now. Chief Supervision Commander had mentioned the new ICT system, but I, I think there'll, there'll be figures there that you're able to eke out of what other systems are there at present.
Councillor McCovin, I'll, I'll take that one off. I think, as I'd said previously, we can certainly look at getting that data. I guess the, the challenge becomes the, the proportionality of the, of then length of rapport, extent of data that we then start putting into it to start going, comparing division by division, divisional area by divisional area. And, and that, that data is published in, in any case quarterly by Police Scotland and its national statistics. But what, what I could do, if it would help, is, is do, is look that Ross and I take away and, and, and illustrative look for you on, on say violent or the, the key crime types to come back to you specifically around.
Yep. I, I think an extra, an extra bar in the chart would suffice. It would show me where Dundee is in Scotland. I'm not looking for any greater detail than, than, than what's there at, at present. And, and my second question, Chair, similar to councillor Duncan's on fraud and vehicle crime. The vehicle crime, it mentions in the narrative about travelling offenders. Is this a common theme across Scotland, travelling criminals, or is it just T-Side or the Dundee issue? And with regards to the fraud, horrible crime for a lot of people embarrassed by actually being caught. And, and I would imagine there's quite a few under, under reporting because of the embarrassment of being caught. I've heard two or three local constituents have been a victim of that particular crime and have refused to report it for that very reason. You mentioned preventative work that Police Scotland does on social media channels. Now, quarter one showed an increase, quarter two shows an increase. Is there anything else that could be done to complement what you're already doing with regards to that particular crime type?
Just to come in on both then, councillor. So in terms of the first one, Dundee and T-Side is not unique at all in terms of suffering from bouts of travelling offenders. In fact, we, we will often see if organised groups are operating through T-Side, we'll see an increase in those crimes, crime types in Aberdeen and Fife, where that, that kind of journey travels along the main trunk routes through, through the country. So Dundee is not unique in being targeted in that particular way. As I say, we've got robust arrangements in place with the national partners, other divisions, et cetera. So we can work collaboratively to, to deal with those, those crimes when they do occur. And just moving on to your, your question around fraud, so I can provide that reassurance that, that every victim of fraud across the city is visited or contacted by a crime prevention officer on the tail end of each crime. So I take your point around social media not necessarily being a platform that, that every victim may interact with so that there is an absolutely a need for a, a range of options. And we see, you know, national campaigns via television, we see social media posting, but, but actually we also do that kind of face-to-face contact with victims, with that pure, you know, with that real, that real focus on trying to build a kind of group of support around that particular victim. Or it's a friend, a family member or others who can provide that ongoing support and maybe encouragement to, to make sure they are seeking assistance or reporting it to us to, to make sure that we, they're in a position to, to help as much as we can. So hopefully that, that individual contact with each victim gives you some of the reassurance you're looking for, councillor.
Thanks for that, Ross.
And we've got Daniel.
Thank you, Convenor. Along with my colleagues, and I, I assume I was, I was inundated with constituents' concerns about the recent serious incidents in Kirkton. I'm aware this to be a curtain next steps briefing next month and I welcome this. But meantime, can I thank the police for its response in very challenging circumstances? I note the report on page thirty-eight on engagement with Asda Kirkton and having had issues recently for staff there, which have also been echoed in the local press by the, by the store. Can I ask if there will be continuing, continuing to be ongoing engagement with the store to ensure that future issues will, will be tackled?
Councillor Coleman, I can confirm that there's been a multi-agency meeting involving the, the, the store manager and representatives and also other local elected members who are on the, the call this evening. Our, our community sergeant, Sergeant Craig Reid and his team are, are well cited on all of the issues there, both in terms of, you know, some of the more emergency calls, but also some of the, the routine issues that they experience, particularly around lunchtime and the end of the school day into, into the early evening. So we're well cited on those issues. We've got some agreements in place with staff in terms of how they should be reported. We've got better lines of communication there to make sure that we're able to attend at, at the time that's most meaningful to staff. And I'm, I'm confident, given the, the improved relationships and the points of contact we have, that we can, can really take some constructive steps forward to support the staff in that location.
Thank you.
Not seeing any more questions, so can we agree the report? Georgia, I keep seeing your finger up in the air. Are you coming in?
There's quite a few questions, I think, Christina.
I'm not seeing any more. Sorry.
Thanks, Convenor. Just following on from councillor Coleman's contribution in respect of the chaos that unfolded on Halloween up in Kirkton. The events of Halloween unfortunately fall into a longer term pattern of worsening antisocial behaviour across Dundee. For example, the, the brawl involving upwards of a hundred young people in Brothey Ferry Beach over the summer. And then there are reports of worsening vandalism and violence on local buses since the introduction of free bus travelled for the under twenty-twos. But can I stress that this bad behaviour is an action of a minority of young people? But it's an issue we must address all the same. Our policing capacity is just one of a long list of things which have been cut to the bone by twelve years of austerity. It's widely known that we have lost a generation of young people who have fallen through the cracks during Covid, which is ironically fueling this fire. So how will the hierarchy of Police Scotland, the council and the Scottish government answer for this? And what are the plans to respond? Thank you.
Yeah, councillor, maybe just to come in around the local response. So what I can say is that we are, we're, we're very keen to recognise a number of those points. And I, I would absolutely agree that there's work to do around a particular group of young people within the city. But I'm equally grateful to you for, for highlighting the fact that the vast majority are sociable, constructive and well-balanced individuals who are equally as disgusted and appalled by what, what we've seen as, as what they've seen in their own communities, particularly when they've suffered vandalisms to their own schools, which, which I know they, they hold in, in high regard. And moving forward, there, there has already been a, a number of multi-agency meetings taking place. We've got a, a real focus on how we deliver that broader, broader number of youth diversionary projects right across the city. And also a wee bit of work from us around how we can share a really positive analytical product around, you know, what time of night, which day of the week, and which individuals are mainly responsible so that we can make sure that any investment in youth diversionary work is, is clearly targeted at the right place at, at the right time and, and is actually, actually being accessed by those who we are really keen to tie in to those services to, to avoid kind of further activity across the city. You know, I would say in terms of antisocial behaviour across the board, we are seeing a shrinking number of antisocial behaviour incidents. However, that, that's not to hide the fact that of that smaller number of antisocial behaviour issues, we're certainly seeing an incremental rise of incidents linked to younger people. And, and that's, as you say, clearly been demonstrated through disorder in Kirkton, Brothey Ferry, as you mentioned. And, and I would suggest issues in Douglas not, not so long ago as well. So there are issues right across the city, certainly not confined to Kirkton, and that, that we're all, as a partnership, cited on and, and very keen to tackle as we move through the next few months. And as I say, be able to give you that further detail as we move into elected member briefings next month. And as we start to kind of formulate like plans in terms of how we take that work forward in coming months and years.
And I've got Pete next.
Thanks, Convenor. I've got two questions, if that's okay. One will need a bit of detail, one will be quite short. And my first question, you've kind of already touched on it a bit. It is about the drop in detection rates for rape crimes. And so thanks in advance for giving us a bit, a bit of detail on that and the lengthy historic investigations. But I was wondering if you could give a bit more detail on what support there is in place for victims who are going through these very long investigations, which I'm sure is traumatic for them involved.
Just to touch on the, the policing supports first and foremost. So every victim of that crime type is provided with a specialist officer called a sexual offences liaison officer. So they have very specific training to support that victim through the lifetime of that investigation. So that it's not simply a case of investigating the crime, but it absolutely is around looking after the welfare and wellbeing of that individual. And moving on from there, we, we clearly tie in closely with a number of very positive and hard work in third sector agencies right across the city and use our kind of databases as a means to share appropriate information where we have consent to make sure that broader kind of spectrum of supports is available in, in each case as we, as we move through those investigations. But I mean, there is a, a huge amount of positive work there. I'm more than happy to give you a more detailed response in respect of all the resources that are available that we tie into and away from this meeting. But hopefully that gives a, a general sense of the fact that we, you know, we use specialist officers throughout and are well tied into the partnership to make sure. we use specialist officers throughout and are well tied into the partnership to make sure the safety planning is absolutely critical in terms of our response.
Yeah, that's helpful. Thanks. If you could give me a bit more detail for resources, I think it'd be handy to have. My second short question, which I don't think you'll be able to answer today, but if you could get back to me is about the stuff and search figures. It looks like the amount of positive searches has gone down. Has there been, sort of as a percentage, has there been a move away from more intelligence-based searching to more random? Given the events in Kirkton, Brophy Ferry over the summer, is there more random searching being done? And I'm not sure you'll have those figures to hand, but it would be handy if we could see them, if you could get back to us on it.
Councillor, maybe come back in and also just apologise for losing my connection there. So apologies, I lost a couple of the questions, but I trust Ross has been able to easily answer as he always does. I guess firstly, we wouldn't be looking to undertake random searches. I think that's the key point. All of our searches are based around about, you know, having a suspicious intent, a reasonable cause. And that might be linked to a host of things. So that's maybe searches because of suspicious activity linked to drug legislation, linked to accusative crime and potentially the, you know, the handling of stolen property through fireworks or dangerous items going into a sporting ground, for example. So there's not been any particular change in terms of broad reasonings for those searches. It's just, you know, the reason for the original search will be right. It's just actually what's been found has dropped.
Thanks for that.
And we've got a question and a comment from Dorothy.
Thank you, Convena. I'll give my comment first. A very well lead out report, I want to say thank you. And actually, remiss of me, I should have said the same for the fire service report that came earlier. Very easy to read, very easy to follow and gives me at least just the right amount of information that I want. I know some colleagues had specific questions relating to specific areas, but I find the report very easy to follow and thank you for that. I have one question and it relates to page seventy of the report. And it gives population numbers over time, Scotland and then the different areas within Tayside. Would it be possible to see similar information or laid out in a similar fashion of numbers of police officers?
Councillor, thanks for the positive comments there firstly. But then I guess specifically to your question, I'm not sure that that would be something that I would, from a perspective of being the divisional commander, be keen to do because that has operational implications in terms of the placements of officers and assets. So I can understand why the question's been asked, but for policing operational reasons, it's not something that I'd be looking to do. It's something that I could potentially look to discuss in an off-table perspective, if that was helpful. Just to give an indication, but we have, in terms of figures, eight hundred and ninety-one police officers that cover the Tayside region and they are split and dispersed appropriate to risk, threat, need, community requirements and so on. But the variation at any particular point in time clearly flexes on the basis of operational need, community risk, policing requirements and so on.
Thank you. So could I access that information that I asked for anywhere else nationally?
So the number of police officers that are there in Police Scotland, the total figures are publicly available. So that's that seventeen two three four is the figures that we work to as an organisation as a whole. The allocation per divisional area is publicly accessible, so that eight hundred and ninety-one. But the breakdown of how many officers working in each specific area would present operational challenges for that to be publicly declared. I trust that that's understandable and I can certainly give the reasons why I wouldn't be doing that to you in separate cover if needs be.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. Thank you.
And we have Nadia next.
Yeah, hi. Actually, I think Georgia and Pete have kind of covered my question, touching on prevention and partnership work. I really am happy to get this information over email, but it was just in terms of, as you said, antisocial behaviour going down. But there's seen this slight rise in terms of younger people. So it was just to ask with regards to implementation of trauma-informed practice. Just an update on that and how we can possibly continue to work together around that. I think that'd be really helpful. It was covered in other questions. Also want to say thank you. I convened a meeting with colleagues and the police on Friday regarding kind of violence against women and the West End specifically. And I just wanted to say how wonderful a meeting it was and it's so nice to be able to just have that really close partnership working. So thank you very much for that.
And so thanks again for those comments and certainly your first part there. We can cover in that subsequent briefing that I know has been mentioned to you earlier on by Chief Inspector Fitzgerald. But thanks for those comments and grateful.
I'm definitely not seeing any more names, so can we agree this report? I'm seeing nods. Right, thank you. Arlene?
Item four, antisocial behaviour report, first of July to the thirtieth of September, this is for noting.
Tom, are you taking us through this report?
Thanks Convena. This is just our quarterly antisocial behaviour report to provide an overview of the work of the antisocial behaviour team from the first of July to the end of September. I think the only other comment I would want to make is that we have recently held a briefing for elected members to give us the opportunity to go into more detail. But again, if there's any specific questions, happy to take them.
First we've got Helen.
Yeah, thank you Christina. As you all know, I'm always been a supporter of the antisocial tenants team. But recently I've had concerns about some of the unresolved cases that I have. And some of the complainers being told that there's nothing that can be done for them. Even although, you know, in similar cases, we've been able to resolve them in the past. One constituent was told that, I think by a member of the antisocial tenants team that it could do nothing for him. And mentioned that the environmental health department was only investigating industrial noise nuisance. I had looked to see if there was any changes in any of the legislations for ASBO or environmental health, but couldn't find any way, couldn't find anything that had changed. So I'm just wondering what's gone wrong? If it was one case, I wouldn't worry about, but there's been quite a few now. So what's going wrong? Is there a shortage of staff? Is it a financial situation or is it something else? Thank you.
Tom.
Thanks Convena. I mean, if Bealley Ray wants to give me any specific examples, I'm happy to look into those specifically. In terms of staffing, we have had some vacancies in the antisocial behaviour team, but we're now up to complement. There shouldn't have been any changes in the way that either the antisocial behaviour team or environmental health deal with complaints. Maybe that's the way that it's been articulated to your constituent. You know, maybe it wasn't the best it sounds like, but as I say, I'm happy to look at details. But no, environmental health and antisocial behaviour will collaborate and work together where required. If the complaints are about, you know, people's, if it's noise linked to behaviour or activity, then it's one where the antisocial behaviour team will look at. But and equally, if people are being affected by commercial or industrial noise, yes, that's quite right. Environmental health would investigate that, but it's maybe more of a kind of technical side of things. But there's certainly been no changes. And as I say, I'm happy to look into any individual cases that Bealley Ray has, if she wants to email me.
Yeah, I certainly will forward you them Tom, because I've been concerned about it. And if there's new staff, what training's being given, especially when they're speaking to constituents, you know, to the tenants? Because some of the things that have been said, I was actually surprised at.
Well, as I say, if you want to pass on details, Bealley Ray, I can take a look at those and discuss those with the team.
Okay, thank you.
And we've got a question from Dorothy.
Thank you. Page seventy-one, item four, says that a hundred and twenty-two cases were reopened during the reporting period. I wonder why that is. I've got another wee question after this, if you don't mind. So I wondered why a hundred and twenty-two cases were reopened. Is that something that just happens?
It may be that there's been no activity for a certain period and then the team will close a complaint. If, you know, there's no further information or it seems to have gone quiet. And then if the complaint comes back in, then clearly we'll reopen it and carry out further investigations. That's the most likely explanation for cases to be reopened.
Okay, thank you. And my second question is, relates to page seventy-three, where it says, individual figures are showing a downwards trend in relation to new noise cases. Would it be possible to have added to the report a trend line over time? Specifically for, well particularly for noise nuisance, because that seems to be the thing that takes up everybody's time. Could you show a trend line over time for this?
I can certainly raise that with the team and see if that's feasible. I don't see why it shouldn't be. We just need to look at what we are trending on. But if it was just, certainly in terms of overall numbers of complaints, that should be possible. But if you let me discuss that with the team, councillor McHugh, we'll look at that.
Thank you.
And we've got Georgia next.
Thank you, Convena. Can I ask how closely are the police and council community officers engaging with local bus operators, restaurants and supermarkets on issues of antisocial behaviour? The figures quoted in the report seem rather low compared to the reality in recent months. And I'm additionally concerned by the apparent ease with which underage young people can get hold of vapes and other cigarettes. Are there any plans to address this together with schools, parents and shopkeepers? Thank you.
In terms, yeah, thanks Convena. In terms of the issues around vaping, that's subject to control by our trade and standards team. And they do engage with businesses and look at, you know, what controls are in place and make them aware of the legislation that applies. It's something that relates, you know, it's covered in terms of, it's an age-restricted product. So it's something that we would look at in terms of, for example, we could have undertaken operations for underage products to do test purchasing. For that, we're required to have young people volunteers to do that. And that's something that we're looking to recruit people to help us with that. So that is something that we will plan over the course of the next year. Obviously, we would choose our time to, you know, to undertake such an operation. But in general, I think as we've talked before, we would speak with all partners at our Matic meetings that were referred to earlier about relevant issues. And if that required engagement with local businesses, then that's certainly something that we would do.
Thanks for that, Tom. But in relation to the community wardens, I've been getting reports that there's no visibility. Well, within the Maryfield area, they're saying they haven't seen the community wardens for a while. So is there a recruitment problem in that department?
I think in terms of the community safety wardens, obviously the coordinator and the community safety manager will look at taskings, they have taskings, meetings every day and look at what their priorities are and what areas they should be paying attention to. Clearly, they can't be everywhere all the time, but if there are particular issues in particular areas of the city, then they will, you know, carry out reassurance visits and look into what's going on in any particular area. I can't say specifically, excuse me, current position regarding Maryfield. But certainly that tends to be how they operate. Again, if there's any specific concerns or issues that you have, councillor Crookshank, then please flag them to me and we'll look at that.
Next we've got Mark.
Yeah, thanks Christina. Just to say, Tom, thanks very much. I think your team actually are doing an excellent job under really difficult circumstances. And I think with the addition of the three new members, I think it's the end of November they come in, isn't it? I think it'll be helpful, if not more beneficial to the whole system and as a whole. And I think looking at the report, it's a bit disappointing to see the numbers in coal side, to be completely honest. But I think the majority of them are in noise. And I think I'll go back to the noise app, which has been mentioned in numerous occasions in various committees. Can you maybe give us some idea how often the noise app's actually getting used currently? And if it's being used at all across the world and across the city?
My understanding is that it is being used and it is helpful. I couldn't give you the particular, I don't have the statistics to hand, councillor Flynn. Can certainly get that for you.
Yeah, I think that would be really helpful to understand the reactions that's been taken against what is a primary source of problems for many residents in the world and the city, across all the worlds, I should say. And I think that information would be good to know and the outcomes from that as well. Not obviously in detail, but the outcomes of whether it's been successful in resolving the issues.
Yeah, I mean, in general, what I would say is that when you look at that bar chart and you see that noise is the largest category. But there's a whole kind of spectrum of, as I think I've said in the past, there's a whole spectrum of different types of noise complaints that we get, some of which can be relatively easily resolved, some of which are, you know, perhaps more serious and perhaps a symptom of wider antisocial behaviour. So that there is a full range of different types of noise within that category. But certainly in terms of the noise app, our assessment is that it has been a success. But I can certainly, in terms of allowing us to get a feel for, you know, the type of complaint, what needs to be done or sometimes what the right advice is to give. So but we can certainly get you some further details on the use of that.
Okay, thanks Tom. Cheers.
And we've got Jack's next.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, thanks. Just a quick, a couple of quick questions around antisocial behaviour. I'm just wondering when it's recorded as an incidence. Is that like, say, five families report one incident and it's only one instance or one person? Do you have the statistics of how many people are reporting the same two? I'll give you the example, last week I was contacted by a constituent and it was regarding fireworks used by a resident in the area. Over twenty families were affected and so were their animals. And so it was an impact on that. They did try to report it to antisocial behaviour team. And then they were told it was perhaps more a police matter. And then they spoke to the police and directed them back to antisocial behaviour. So I'm just wondering, do you have the numbers, how many people are reporting the same person that's being antisocial? And do you have worked with other people in other teams, for example, the animal welfare? This is the whole community now that is believed as antisocial behaviour in the community that's affecting animals. So do you have worked with animal welfare teams and RSTCA and who is responsible for following all this up? Sorry, it's a bit of a guardfunk thing, so there's two points to that. Have the incidents logged as just the incidents or that there's twenty people reporting that? And do you have worked with other agencies such as police, RSPCA for animal welfare and animal control as well? Thanks.
In terms of the question, obviously, if, you know, several people are complaining about the one issue, the team, excuse me, the team will note that and record that and they will respond to each person that's complaining. In terms of the wider issue, fireworks and animals is a difficult one. It would be difficult for the team to identify, you know, individuals. And once it's done, that issue around impact on animals is happening, you know. At the time, those fireworks are going off. In terms of wider concerns around animal welfare, that would be someone that our, we have animal wardens that work, you know, on that issue. They'll have links with RSPCA if there's wider animal welfare issues. The fireworks one is probably slightly different and there's a lot of information and material that's publicised about the impact on animals, you know, around firework time. The legislation is in place now to reduce the hours under which fireworks can be used and reduce the times that they can be sold to try and minimise and reduce the impact of fireworks. But it would be a difficult one, I think, for the antisocial behaviour team to deal with at that time. It's difficult to specify, you know, which fireworks are going off at which time. So it's more one of a kind of information and putting information out to let people understand the impact that they can have on animals, I would say.
Okay, so if, for example, the new legislation that says you can only use fireworks within the time scales on the dates, if somebody was continually using them with those dates, who would it be reported to? I think is what I'm asking then. Which responsibility is it to, if the person could be identified as letting off fireworks over a period of hours, not like your thirty-minute display, a period of hours out with the times as mentioned in the firework technique, if fireworks can fire a tech, who is it on the phone?
Well, certainly, we would take that, we would, if a complaint came into us, we would discuss with our partners the best way forward. So again, that may be one that we'd discuss at our MATEC meetings. Or in the community safety hub, there's police officers based there. So I would expect the antisocial behaviour team to have a conversation with their colleagues in police and work out the best approach to that one.
That's great. Thanks very much, Tom.
I'm not seeing any more names for this one. Are you in agreement with this report?
Yeah, right, thank you. And that's the end of this report. So thank you very much for your attendance.
Thank you, Convena. The next committee is the neighbourhood services committee.
Thank you, Mr Many. I think Arlene is the person who's going to take us through the committee this evening. So if Arlene can start us off.
Thanks, Convena. Item one, declaration of interest. Are there any declarations?
Dorothy? Yes, thank you. I have a declaration of interest in relation to item four. I'm secretary of Dundee Pensioners Forum and they are mentioned in this report. Mr Many, do we need to give councillor McHugh guidance? Can she speak on that item?
Yes, in my view, that amounts to transparency statement, Convena. And I see no reason why councillor McHugh shouldn't take part in the meetings during that item.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Arlene?
Item two, transfer of neighbourhood services, community centre facilities management to T-Side contracts. This is for approval.
Thank you. So this report is asking us to remit to the community section the agreement of a facilities management partnership agreement with T-Side contracts to deliver the management services to our, for our community centres. We're being asked to approve the transfer of the existing postholders to T-Side contracts on first April next year. And under the two pay arrangements, they will be assured that there'll be no detriment to the terms and conditions of their employment. Discussions on these transfers have been ongoing since 2019 and the trade unions have no formal objections. It's hoped this change will increase work and career opportunities for the postholders and also improve cover in our community centres. So we're being asked to approve the remittance for the negotiation of the agreement and approve the transfer. Are there any questions on this report or are people happy to approve?
Convena had a question.
Yeah, Bailey Keenan, I could see you, yes.
Sorry, I was wee answering the door there as well. Couple of questions, Convena. I've got concerns about the move, given that I feel that there is a likelihood we will lose the goodwill of the resource assistance that are there. And some time ago in Adler, there was a resource assistant that used to put together the whole of the Christmas display and then come in an Afi number who's in time and work as a Santa Claus delivering to her kids inside. So I've got concerns about that. I'd like to know the number of individuals that were going to transfer. And if we're transferring at the moment with a shortage of staff and expecting, obviously, T-Side contracts to recruit. I'm also concerned about the comments that are made in point three-two that suggests there'll be a non-cashable efficiency saving. So I want an understanding as to whether that sort of twenty percent of our current managers' time would be useful to know. And I would be really interested to know as well is how this change will reduce staff turnover and absence. You know, what makes T-Side contracts a much better employee than us? That would keep people at their work and stop them looking for another job.
Thank you, Bailey Keenan. I'll hand over to officers here. My understanding in terms of the reduction in turnover is that they have a much larger pool of staff at T-Side contracts. So there are more career opportunities, there's more cover opportunities and more chances for staff to broaden their careers. We have a very small pool of staff and I'm sure, I know that Marie Daly has the numbers. But I'll turn to Elaine, it's Verleen first, to advise me on which officers should respond. Elaine?
Yeah, thank you very much, Convena. As you say, this report is about resilience within the service. And that's the basis of the transfer, is to make sure that we don't have any gaps in service delivery and we can maintain the opening of our community centres for our communities. But I'll ask Marie to pick up some of the detailed questions that Bailey Keenan has raised and to respond to them. Marie?
Yeah, thanks, Elaine. I may have to ask you to repeat some of those questions. I did try and jot them all down.
I think the key ones were the numbers of staff, goodwill, and then some details about the non-cashable. Yeah.
I've got that. Okay, in terms of the numbers of staff, I think we've put the numbers of staff in the report. So there's six full-time and eight part-time staff. And you asked about whether we're transferring vacancies. The agreement that we've got is that we will transfer a full service. So the vacancies that we currently have are in the process of being recruited for. So staff will transfer all on the same terms and conditions. In relation to goodwill, I mean, I don't actually see how we should lose any goodwill. It's the same people that are going to be working in the same places with the same local management groups. I've been undertaking the trade union consultation and the consultation with individual staff members. And I can say in all honesty that I've not had any negative comments from the staff concerned. I think that they see that there are opportunities. It's not that they're a better employer. It's that they've got a much bigger service than we do. So there are wider opportunities for people to take up different posts that we can't have. And in terms of the time, I think that that's quite hard to quantify because what it is, is that myself and other members of staff can just get pulled at short notice to try and fill vacancies, deal with sickness absence. So there will be savings in staff time, but I can't tell you exactly how much because it will vary on a week-to-week basis depending on what actually happens. But in terms of T-Side contracts, you'll be aware that they currently manage the school janitorial service. That's been a successful transfer. And we feel that this affords people the opportunity to transfer at no detriment to the staff involved and be part of a bigger facilities management service.
Thank you, Marie. We have a question from councillor Coleman.
Yes, thank you, Convena. As this significantly affects our staff providing the service, including at centres around Ward, can I ask if during the formal consultation with staff and the trade unions, did they raise any issues of possible concerns? And if so, what were they and have they been addressed satisfactorily? And can I please also have an assurance that the committee will receive an update report after six months on how the transfer has worked and any issues that have been encountered so that we can be assured that the effect on this, on our staff and service has been fully monitored and any issues are being addressed?
Marie?
Yes, I could come back on that. As I say, I've undertaken the consultations and I think my colleague Nicky McCrimmins on the call as well. And he has too, there haven't been any objections raised by staff. There's obviously been questions. There was questions about their terms and conditions. There was questions about their holidays. I think any kind of normal questions you would expect as part of this process. But the negotiations that we had were actually very amicable and that the questions that the staff had were all raised to their satisfaction. So I've not had any individual members of staff coming back who are transferring with any objections. In relation to providing a report after six months, then yes, we would be happy to do that. You're aware that the proposed transfer date is the first of April. So that report would be due in September. And I would also like to reassure committee that we're not washing our hands of this service. We are very committed to community centres. And part of this facilities management arrangement will be that we will have contract meetings with T-Side contracts regularly. So we won't be, you know, waiting for six months to try and raise any issues. If things are coming up, then we will be raising them immediately with them because it's a service contract we have.
Thank you, Marie. I have Bailey Scott next.
Thanks, Convena. It was just in relation to bullet point six, when it's giving the reasons for the preferred option being supported and its regard to future service redesign. And I just wondered what the thinking is behind that. What sort of redesign are you looking at? And will any other post be transferred to T-Side contracts?
Marie, can you respond?
Yeah, I can. I think we're just signalling that there may be future redesign because as you will be aware, there is approval in the council already in the manifesto for three-six-five schools and looking at shared facilities. So I think we're just signalling that that may be something that happens in the future. But at the moment, there is no redesigned planned. The service is going to transfer exactly as it is. But we are just indicating that as things change in the council and as maybe the way that we're managing the services do, then there may be an opportunity there to look at more shared resources.
Thank you, Marie. And I also understand that there is a trade union forum. So the outcome of this transfer will also be reported to them. So there'll definitely be attention paid to the transfer of the staff and their wellbeing post this point. Can I take it that this report is now approved? I see no dissent. Arlene, can you take us on to our next item, please?
Thanks, Convena. Item three, environmental improvement works 2022. This is for approval.
Thank you. So this report is basically listing five projects that are to do with environmental improvements. They've all been designed to improve and enhance our open spaces to make them safer and more attractive for residents across Dundee. The specific locations include the installation of amphibian ladders. I really like the idea of amphibian ladders at Bolumby and Cleaver House, biodiversity improvements in Maryfield, surface improvements at Balgate and Eastern Cemeteries, entrance improvements at Baxter Park, boundary enhancements around clay pots, curling pond and street furniture and planting improvements at the Grassy Beach. Can I ask the committee to approve these proposals? Everybody happy with that? Good. Arlene, our next item.
Item four, bin chute closure Burnside Court evaluation. This is for approval.
Okay, thank you. Item four is basically two key points to this report. It's to update the committee on the closure of the Burnside Court bin chute and all the actions that were taken to ensure that the chute was closed successfully and people were advised on how to use the recycling. And the second part of the report is asking for committee approval to close the bin chutes in the remaining multi-storey development locations over the next twelve months. The policy drivers behind this are firstly improving fire and safety within the blocks and Scottish Fire and Rescue fully support the closure of the bin chutes in order to enhance tenant safety. And the second part of the policy drivers are around ensuring all of our tenants have the opportunity to recycle. There'll be an extensive programme of consultation with all tenants where staff will engage with every single tenant to ensure they're aware of the timetable for the closure in their block and to also ensure that they are aware of the new arrangements. And we will be investigating any form of assistance that is required. I can see that we have some questions, so I'll bring in councillor Crookshank.
Thank you very much, Convena. The subject of fire safety and multi-storey developments is of paramount importance in the wake of the Grenfell Tower disaster more than five years ago. In this respect, I appreciate the concerns raised by officers and taking good faith that the proposals to permanently close bin chutes is indeed a matter of public safety and not merely another spending cut. The survey data shows that some residents have expressed negative impacts on them with the pilot closure at Burnside Court. What impacts have these residents described and what has the council done to address the concerns of Burnside and to preempt them elsewhere? I have a further question after this, but I'll take this one first. Thank you.
Do you want to ask your question now, councillor?
Yeah, yeah, okay, no problem. And the report quotes a potential maintenance saving of £60,000. Can we expect this money to be redeployed? If so, where and when can we expect it to be spent? Thank you.
Thank you. So about fire safety as the paramount cause, responses from the residents at Burnside and the savings, which I think will already be being spent. And can I bring in Aline or shall we bring in Louise Lilain?
Thank you, Convena. As as councillor Cookshank has said, you know, the report is 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 about fire safety and and a multi-agency group was established following the tragedy of Grenfell, where a number of recommendations came out of that that multi-agency work. And this is one of them that we'll be bringing forward. So it is very much with that in mind that it's a range of of professionals who have looked at this very carefully and and recommending the 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 right way forward to maintain safety within our multi-stories. But in relation to the the pilot, I'll bring Louise Pucher, who's the head of housing and communities, housing and and construction, who will be able to explain some of the issues that were raised and how we managed to work through them with the residents. Louise?
Thanks, Aline, and thank you for the question. And as it's noted in section 5.3 of the report, we did get a small number of respondents that had reported some concerns. And they particularly, they 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 related to the location of the new bins and also that the bins were full and overflowing. As this was a pilot, what we were doing was monitoring the frequency of uplifts and working in partnership with colleagues in environment. What we were able to do was increase the level of uplift so that this was resolved. In terms of the location of the bins, and we took feedback from tenants around the accessibility and also worked with Scottish Fire and Rescue Service to make sure that they were located in the appropriate location and were able to move them accordingly. And the final bit of feedback we got from one resident in particular was around accessibility. And we undertook a support needs assessment and resulted in a smaller bin being located within the cohort of bins that we had on site. And in respect of your second question, councillor Cookshank, and we note that currently the costs are ongoing around £60,000. That is expenditure that comes from our repairs, maintenance and planned maintenance budget. And that would be reinvested back into into that budget.
Thank you, Louise. I have a question from councillor McHugh.
Thank you. First of all, can I say that Dundee Pensioners Forum is fully supportive of closing bin chutes in relation to health and safety and improved recycling across the city? And having said that, they have been involved in previous discussions when, at the time of the Burnside Court closure. But they were not consulted in the preparation of this report, as it says in the report that they were. And they do not agree with the content. In particular, I have a, sorry.
Councillor McHugh, it's just, you're here as a councillor in your capacity as a councillor at this meeting. So you've declared your involvement with the Pensioners Forum, but I think here you must speak as a councillor, not as the secretary.
Okay, I have a question then. At the moment, older people or disabled people who have mobility issues are offered what is called backdoor collections if they live in a house. Can a process be put in place similar to the backdoor collections for older and disabled people affected by this proposal? I have another question on the integrated impact assessment, which I'd like to ask if I can later.
If if you can ask that now, councillor McHugh, and we'll get both the questions dealt with.
Okay. The integrated impact assessment has 12 sections and five of these deal directly with tenants. Thirty-seven out of forty-six possible impacts on the assessment are shown as not known. So my question is, has an assessment been made?
Okay, thank you very much. My understanding is there's going to be full consultation with all of the tenants about what needs they have in response to the new arrangements. So we will be assessing what support is required and looking at ways of assisting people, whether that's providing smaller bins that are easier to open and sorting out support arrangements. So I I know that there's going to be a very thorough analysis at that point. And I'll ask Louise to amplify on that point and also respond on the impact assessment question.
Thank you for that, councillor Anderson, and thank you for the questions, councillor McHugh. And I think just to note in the first point, there's been three meetings in advance of this committee with the Pensioners Forum, where we've engaged with them on matters around the pilot in preparation for this report. In respect of the points you make in terms of support, what the report sets out is that not only will we look at the demographic of our residents within the multi prior to the closure, it's an intention to engage with every tenant living in the multi with a view to undertaking a support needs assessment where they're agreeable to doing this. And what we'll then work through is what the mitigating factors are to support them to be able to use the bins at each multi-story safely and and allow them to to recycle their their waste. In terms of the quality impact assessment, what the quality impact assessment does is it doesn't assume the impact and instead it recognises the impacts as we've learnt from this pilot and sets out the mitigations. What it also notes is that we've consulted with other groups, including Dundee Access Group and the Federation of Tenants Association. And moving forward, what we've done is committed to engage with all affected tenants and and carry out that demographic check. And from the support need assessment, fully understand where it's not known what the mitigating factors are to support residents to be able to recycle.
Thank you very much, Louise. And I've got a question from councillor Malone.
Hopefully you could hear me, my internet's just moving out back and forward. Obviously, following on from councillor McHugh, I'd like to welcome the 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 report in terms of the the health and safety issues and the and the advice that we've been given by Fire Scotland. I'd actually like to comment on the consultation, because if the consultation hadn't been carried out to the satisfaction of the tenants, I think my entry would be full of people asking questions. And I haven't had a single representation from a constituent that lives as a resident in the multi. So obviously, the the consultation and the ongoing dialogue is working. My only little question, and I'm sure it's one that you could answer quite easily, is yes, we are going to be making provision for people with disabilities. What my concern would be is when we have got issues where there's the 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 bins are being overused, that people will start using disabled facilities and then further restricting the access to that for people with disabilities. How's that going to be monitored?
Thank you, thank you for that. Louise?
Yep, thank you, councillor Anderson, and thanks for the question. And like we did with Burnside, we've got staff on site daily and who monitor and who could see if there's any issues around waste overflowing. But also in partnership with colleagues in environment, what we're going to be doing at each multi-story is reviewing the level of waste and the use of the bins to determine the frequency of uplifts. So it might not be the case that it is the same for every multi-story, but we'll be monitoring it and putting in place an appropriate uplift regime for for moving that forward.
Thank you, Louise.
Okay, thank you, Convena. Thank you for that, Convena. I'm probably a hostage to fortune now, I'm going to walk up Lockie High Street and I'm getting inundated with people from Burnside Court complaining about the chutes. But as I said, I haven't had a single comment or a single concern raised.
When I was at the bottom of Burnside Court, I was putting my plastic bottle in the bin. I did ask four people if there was a problem, they all said it was going well, so similar experience. So hopefully it will continue to be positive, that's the intention. I have Bailey Scott next, and I think that's the last question on this report.
I just wanted to ask about the checks that are going to be made on rubbish that's left on landings or in lifts. Will the the checks, it says that these will be similar to the to the checks already undertaken. Will these be more frequent in the initial period of the change? And are we sure that we have sufficient staffing resource to carry out thorough checks?
Thank you, Louise.
Thank you, Bailey Scott. And my colleague Tom is on this call, and I know Tom's team were heavily involved in terms of the SARC and those staff that are based on site, who currently undertake daily checks of each of the multi-stories several times a day. What we've also since put in place is fortnightly estate management checks from our Tennessee Estates team. And we also have technical officers inspecting the multi-story from a fire safety and health and safety perspective on the following fortnight. So not only do we have staff on site daily, but we've also got other officers in the blocks every fortnight undertaking that. I think it's like any estate management issue though, where we find hotspots, we will deploy resource to increase the level of inspections. And that's why in this case, we're looking at a rollout on a phased period so that we could focus on the particular block where it's being closed at that stage.
So we are trying to do a positive thing in a constructive way and move forward and make it a success. So do I take it that this, the recommendations in this report are approved? Thank you. Arlene?
Item five, tenders received by head of design and property. This is for approval.
Thank you. So we've got seven tenders to approve. Four of them are to do with fire alarm upgrades in but in sheltered housing complexes. One is to do with domestic electrical inspections and a programme of work. The sixth one is on the nature restoration fund at Trotick, I think it's at Trotick Park, let me just check. Yes, and then and then we've got courtyard improvements between Dalfield and Tullock Court. And are councillors happy to approve these tenders as submitted? I see no dissent, so I'll take that as approval. Thank you. That's neighbourhood services for this evening. Thank you for your attendance and participation.
Thank you, Convena. The final meeting this evening is the Policy and Resources Committee.
Good evening, folks. I am very conscious that we have been going for two hours. And I think previously elected members have asked for a slight comfort break. So can I suggest that we take five minutes at this point? Allow you to fill up your coffee cups and go to the toilet or whatever else you need to do in those five minutes. So we'll come back at eight minutes past seven, please. Thank you. See my screen being populated with your faces again, so we will begin the meeting. Willie?
Yeah, thanks very much, Convena. Firstly, are there any declarations of interest? And there being no declarations, then it takes you on time.
Hold on, Willie, too quick. Pete?
Yeah, I'm not sure if it is or not, but I'd rather state it and and get advice. It's about item 13, the wifi in primary schools. I work for the biggest internet provider in the UK, so there may be a chance that they're approached for the contract. So I'm not sure if I would need to recuse myself or or not, and if I could get a bit of advice on that, please.
Yep, I'm happy to bring in Mr Many. Roger?
Thank you, Convena. I think the safest advice to any councillor is if they are concerned that they may have an interest to declare, that they should declare it. If that is your intention, councillor Shears, can I suggest that this item is taken last? So councillor Shears can leave the meeting and then we continue the business in his absence. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Roger. Thanks, Pete. See no other declarations, Willie, so we can move on.
Yeah, thanks very much. Item two then is a minute for the patient subcommittee and patient board of 17th of October. This is for noting.
Again, hopefully self-explanatory. No comments, questions on this? Can that be agreed? Thank you. Willie?
Yeah, item three, there is the International Holocaust Remembrance Alliance, definition of antisemitism. And this item's been placed on agenda at the request of Deputy Lord Provost Cordell.
I'll hand straight over to Deputy Lord Provost, and I'm sure that he'll ask for his motion to be circulated whilst he's speaking to it. Kevin?
Thank you, Chair. I believe that Mr Waddell should have a copy of that, so if he could circulate it, that would be appreciated. And then I will just speak briefly while spoken, taking that in. The Community Security Trust is a charity that protects the UK's Jewish population from antisemitism and related threats, and has been recording antisemitic incidents since 1984. 2021 saw them record the highest level of Jewish hate incidents since the trust's inception. And although relatively small in comparison, Scotland has seen a doubling of incidents in the last five years. And that is why it's so important the Dundee City Council joins the numerous public bodies at home and those abroad who have adopted the International Holocaust Remembrance Alliance definition of antisemitism, which expands to give examples of the way in which antisemitism can present itself in public life. Now, it's not a strict legal code, but has been described as a practical tool to help identify different examples of possible antisemitism. Nor is it a replacement for policies to address and reduce antisemitism in society. But it will be much easier to tackle antisemitism with the definition than without it. As far back as 2017, the Scottish Council of Jewish Communities, the representative body of all the Jewish communities in Scotland and the Community Security Trust, agreed that the adoption of the definition by the Scottish Government would be helpful in tackling antisemitism in Scotland. Numerous Scottish local authorities have also now done so. Therefore, it's past time for Dundee City Council to adopt the definition in full and with one voice say that we will do all that we can to lead by example and show our commitment to ensuring everyone in our city and beyond is treated with the respect they deserve and that antisemitism has no place in our society. So with that, I I hope the motion has been circulated and I will leave it at that.
Thanks very much. Councillor Cordell has, I can see councillor Hunter is seconding. Is that a formal second or do you want to speak? Stuart?
I'll just speak very briefly. I do appreciate there's a lot of business, so I won't take up too much time. I just thought that this is a really important, this motion and actually the next debate we're going to have is really important. I think it's significant that we discuss the both of them on the same night. And I think it's important that we, as a full council, support essentially this motion by the Deputy Lord Provost. So more than happy to support it. I think just reflecting and just looking through my timeline on social media day, the more and more people calling out antisemitism, particularly in relation to Twitter after what's happened recently with the the buyout by Elon Musk. And there's been a lot of hatred seen on the social media site since he took over. And, sorry, I thought I heard somebody in the background there. And so, yes, I think it's really important that tonight that we support this motion by the Deputy Lord Provost and show that Dundee stands against all bigotry, all racism, and we will fight it against all all kinds of racism. So I think it's really important tonight that we support this. And given the fact that we have a lot on the agenda, I won't say much more than that.
Thanks very much, Stuart. I'll move on to comments. So I have councillor Cookshank.
Can I reserve my comment until I've heard from Nadia El-Nakla, please? Because I'm commenting on both of them. Thank you.
Okay, well, by the time we get to the next motion, this would have been agreed, I presume, Georgia. So just to clarify that point, if it's a comment rather than you moving anything against, so.
No, no, not at all, in full agreement. Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you very much. Bailey MacPherson?
Thanks, Convena. In a way, my comment is about both items. I have enough confidence in my ward colleague councillor El-Nakla to know that what she'll bring forward, I'm sure, will be of equal acceptability to the committee. I I just like to thank and congratulate the Deputy Lord Provost and councillor El-Nakla for bringing forward motions on issues that I think should be of concern to everybody, no matter where they are in the country. Antisemitism and Islamophobia are disgraceful and should always be called out. Our city has a very proud record of standing against prejudice, bigotry and discriminatory behaviour. And for that reason, as I say, I'm grateful to the two members for bringing these forward tonight. I'll not say any more for the same reason that councillor Hunter said they'll enter the agenda tonight. But as I say, I think these are very worthwhile issues to be discussing and to be agreeing on. And I feel sure we will be able to do so in a unanimous fashion. Thank you, Convena.
Thanks very much, Fraser. And I would certainly agree with all the comments that have been made. I think it's right that we stand united against all the forms of racism, bigotry and, you know, make sure that we're representing all of our communities. And I think it's really important as well to reflect on what's included in the motion, which is the faith covenant, which was agreed in 2020. And there was a recent event held in the city chambers with faith representatives from across the board, which the Lord Provost and I hosted, and councillor El-Nakla was also a participant in. And I think it's really important that we continue that form of engagement as well. So with all of that said, I see no further comments or questions. no further comments or questions on this. Can I take this as agreed? Thank you very much. We shall move on. Willie?
Yeah, thanks very much. Item four then is UK old party parliamentary group definition of Islamophobia.
I'll come straight to councillor El-Nakla to move her motion. Nadia?
Thank you. And I'd just like to ask that it's been circulated. So you'll all have a chance to see it. I'm conscious of time as well, but I think it's a very short definition. So I'll just read it to everyone so that they have it. The idea is to adopt the all parliamentary group definition of Islamophobia, which states Islamophobia is rooted in racism and is a type of racism that targets expressions of Muslim-ness or perceived Muslim-ness. So that's the definition there. I can go into the fact that approximately 80% of Muslims in Scotland have experienced Islamophobia directly. No one should live in fear of expressing their beliefs and being able to participate in society being who they truly are. I believe that we're all progressive and that through the adoption, we'd be sending along, sorry, a strong message to the community that we support them and that we have zero tolerance of any Islamophobia, any antisemitism, any religious hatred in any way. As councillor Alexander touched upon, the covenant expresses the fact that we will work with all faith communities. And it's really important that these words are not just on a paper and we pass them today and that's it over. But really, this is a commitment from all of us to work towards a more tolerant, inclusive society. So I'll end it there. If there's any questions, please let me know.
Thanks very much. I will come to councillor Short to second the motion.
Yes, convenor, I'd like to second the motion. Like my colleagues have said previous to me, it's a very quick night. And so I just want to put behind both of the motions that we've had, my support and also like councillor Hunter, very glad that they've both come on the same evening. As I think it's a really good idea to show that we're behind all of our communities and looking to support everyone. And in backdrop, the backdrop of what's happening in the world is really important that leadership happens in our streets, right to the very top of our organisations across the world. So if we can make the stand, then maybe international organisations like FIFA could make stands other than playing in places like Qatar. Thank you.
Thanks very much for these words and certainly agree. And I have, you know, a dislike of the word tolerance. I think it sets the wrong tone. This is about inclusion and understanding and working with our communities. And I think it's important to say that, you know, the vibrancy of our city is because we are diverse and our communities are diverse. And I think these motions go to that point as well. Councillor Crookshank, I am conscious you wanted to ask a question or make a comment, so I'll come back to you at this point.
Thanks very much, convenor. The Labour Group would like to support both colleagues in seeking council adoption of official definitions of both antisemitism and Islamophobia. In a city which strives to be welcome to all people of any faith, nationality or background, we must heed professional guidance when it comes to navigating these sensitive issues. Persecution of any minority is never okay. As Dundee has shown with its recent work through the Black History Working Group, Breaking the Chains, in connection with the Black History Month, the definition of discrimination, how it affects those targeted, are not up for debate. Dundee City Council should adopt these definitions as strictly reminder of the lanes which should never be crossed in civilised society or indeed anywhere within our communities. Thank you.
Thank you very much for these words and certainly endorse all of them. So I think, again, I see no other comments or questions. So can this be agreed? Excellent. Thank you very much, colleagues. Willie?
Thank you very much. We'll take you on to item five, the accounts and audit. This is split into three sections. First section is external auditors' report, which is for noting.
Yep. Is there any questions, comments? So Bailey McPherson, come to you first.
Yeah, thanks, convenor. First of all, I think, and as I alluded to at scrutiny committee, I think we have a great deal of thanks to give to the staff in finance in particular, but across service departments. Because this is a huge piece of work, as we know every year, and completed timiously. And I think our gratitude sits with them. I just want to make the point, because there was a recent example of where something went to scrutiny, having been already discussed and questioned at inordinate length, frankly, 45 minutes worth of questions, if I recall correctly, at the recess subcommittee, then found its way to the front page of a newspaper, saying that councillors, apart, actually, I was the only person that actually asked a question at scrutiny committee. But the point essentially, that's not a criticism of my colleagues, it's simply the point that it had already been extensively discussed elsewhere. And I think it's maybe just worth placing on the record, this particular matter has already been discussed extensively at scrutiny. In fact, I asked quite a number of questions. My group actually met to formulate what our questions would be. So I just want to make the point tonight, that if there's not a deluge of questions here tonight, that is not because councillors are failing to scrutinise, but because this has actually already been discussed elsewhere at some length. Thanks, convenor.
Thanks very much for these comments. Bailey McPherson, yeah, absolutely agree on it. I think it's worth saying that scrutiny takes many forms and takes place in many forums. And that is true of many council decisions. So thank you for these comments. I see no others, but I would certainly endorse your comments in terms of the amount of work that goes into the preparation of the annual accounts and the tremendous job that our finance colleagues do during very difficult times often. But nonetheless, I think it's worth noting that. Thanks. Is this agreed? Okay, thank you. Willie?
Yeah, thank you. The second section is the response to external auditors' annual audit report. And that's also for noting.
Again, any questions, comments on this? Can I take this as agreed? Thank you.
Yeah. And the remaining sections, audited statement of accounts for Dundee City Council, Dundee City Council Charitable Trust, Lord Provost of Dundee Charity Fund, and finally the Dundee Trust. These are all for noting.
Again, I think self-explanatory. Okay, is this agreed? Yeah. Thank you very much. Willie?
Okay, item six then before is capital expenditure monitoring report. You're asked to agree the proposals.
This is the standard update report that we receive on a regular basis, just providing an appraisal of where we're at at this point in time. So I'll go straight to questions. Bailey McPherson?
Thanks, convenor. My question's really around information on page 275. So I see desperately trying to find it. And it's really around the Harris Academy extension though. Local elected members have been informed and been given a briefing paper regarding a further delay to the Harris Academy extension. We were originally understood that it would be available with effect, you know, it would be open with effect from the start of the 2324 academic year. That was then put back to autumn and has been put back again to Christmas. Now, I think we all understand the challenging environment in relation to capital programmes. I think we're all aware of that. But I would just really like officers' assurances that everything will be done to ensure that this third timeline is actually met. There's the, the schools, as we all know, under significant pressure role-wise, it's bursting at the seams. And the extension will give much-needed expansion with six new classrooms. And it would be very good to get an assurance from officers that everything will be done to ensure that the Christmas 2023 timeframe, the third one, if you like, is met.
Thanks very much for the question. Absolutely. And I think we all want to see progress made. And I'm sure officers will be able to give you that assurance, so much so that Neil, I can see, has desperately put his hand up because he wants to give you that assurance. Neil?
Thanks, convenor. Thanks, Bailey McPherson. Yeah, happy to give that assurance and your appreciation of the challenging conditions that prevail for all construction contracts. And Mrs Mayway may wish to come in and add to that. But in terms of the collaboration that we've had with PMK colleagues and children's families and Mr Miller and the school staff, everything has been done to progress as we have today. And that will be continued to do so to get the school extended and operational with minimum disruption and as soon as possible.
Thanks very much for that clarification, Neil, and that reassurance. And I can see Bailey McPherson, I think, is happy with that response.
I am indeed. And I'm grateful to Mr Martin for the extensive responses he's given to my various questions by email, which is genuinely appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I see no other question. Sorry, apologies. Councillor Creighton?
Thank you, convenor. My question is just ringing gradually to page 278 with the Riverside Recycling Centre. Can I ask exactly what the capital works are for? The department had previously advised, meaning Bailey McPherson, the purchase of a shredder for the composting operation, it was in the capital plan. This would be a really positive step to stop higher costs and also assist the smell, which is pretty bad. Is this included? Or if not, when is it coming going forward?
Thanks very much for the question, Michael. If I can ask, perhaps in future where there's more detailed information required, if we can ask that in advance. But I'm sure Tony will be able to give an overview of what it's for or where it's about, or perhaps follow up after the meeting. Tony?
Aye, convenor. Yeah, I can update that that figure relates to improvements to the site, Riverside Recycling, as opposed to the shredder. We are currently looking at the shredder issue as a separate issue. And we're looking at developing a tender for that. So I'd be happy to update members that are a future committee when we've got more detail on that.
Thanks very much, Tony, for that clarification. And we'll make sure that information's circulated at that time. Now I think I'm right in saying I see no further questions or comments on this. So can we take this as agreed? Thank you very much. Willie?
Okay, item seven then is the annual monitoring report. You're asked to give the recommendations.
Again, this is the regular update that we receive to appraisers of the current situation with our revenue plans. So I'll go straight to questions. Councillor Coleman?
Thank you, Mr convenor. You made a call a couple of months ago at a previous meeting of the committee. I asked a question about energy cost inflation, its effect on council buildings. And I was assured that the council had bought its energy for the forthcoming year. I note on page 289, significant impacts on the children and family services and city development of energy overspends. On the assumption consumption has not risen exponentially. Can I ask the reason for these overspends? Is it because the fixed tariff was agreed at a higher price after budgets were set? Grateful if the director of corporate services could clarify that for me, please. Thank you.
Thanks very much for the question, Daniel. I'll go straight to Robert Emmett. Robert?
Thank you. Thank you, convenor. So the forecast out term figures that we've got are based on the fact that we did, we did secure most of our purchasing of electricity before the start of the year to give us some assurance on prices. We already knew that those were going to be higher going forward and happy to provide councillor Cole with more details of the information behind that. I don't have it immediately to hand in relation to where we're at, but we've been forecasting an overspend on energy costs. Because if you recall, we agreed to carry forward the funding for that from the end of last year. So the figures are higher than we anticipated when we set the budget, but they haven't got any worse for this year. And obviously, we're monitoring closely what's going to be happening with next year. But as I said, I'll provide some supplementary information on the detail if that will be helpful to councillor Coleman.
Thanks very much, Robert. And if I can ask that you circulate that information to all elected members, because I think obviously it impacts on every area, service and every part of the city. So useful to have. Thanks very much. I'll come to Bailey Keenan next. Kevin?
Right. Construction services overspend. Few issues. Seems to be the only area council that's affected by absence, yet there is about a 12% absence across the city. So I'm wondering if we've got more of a problem in Dundee contract services and what we're doing to address that. And the other aspect of accrued holiday pay, wondering what impact we're having there. Have we allowed people to carry forward holidays? And if we have, when do we expect that to be resolved? Given that we know what people's annual leave should be for within the year and we would expect them, I would have thought to take it over the year at certain periods so as that they are rested and they are an effective workforce for that.
Yeah, thanks very much for the question, Kevin. I'll come straight to the chief executive, Greg.
Yeah, thanks, convenor. And thanks, Bailey Keenan, for the question. I don't have detailed information to hand with regards to absences, but happy to share that and give the committee the assurance that absence is monitored on a monthly basis by the council leadership team. And in particularly, how we support our staff through a number of different ways, such as referrals to occupational health, and looking at areas where we can support for any staff that are suffering from mental health or require physio. With regards to accrued leave, I'll maybe convenor ask Robert Emmett to come in, given I know this has been a change which has been impacted due to change in how we record and have to monitor accrued leave.
Okay, thanks, Greg. Happy for others to come in.
Thanks, convenor. So at the end of the year, we do accrue leave that's due in construction services, particularly because when staff are off, then that affects the productivity of the section, then that has an impact. We allowed staff, obviously after COVID, there was a difficulty with taking leave and we allowed staff to take that. And it'll be probably best for Louise Butchard to come in on the current details, if you want, the current details of where staff are up to. But we did allow staff to carry forward their leave. And I would imagine that in the course of this year, that will now resolve itself. So that'll be a problem that we won't have next year.
Very much, Robert. I'll come to Louise, obviously as head of construction, she'll have more information and then I'll come back to you, Kevin.
Get that detail sent out.
Okay, I'll let Louise come back just in case there's anything she wishes to add. So Louise?
Yeah, just to clarify, the annual leave will be resolved within, by the end of this calendar year.
Yes, thank you very much for that. And we'll move on to the next item, please.
Thank you very much. With that item having been agreed, item eight then is the capital plan report. You're asked to give the recommendations.
This is obviously a report which I don't think any of us particularly wanted to see in terms of the position we find ourselves in with an increasing cost associated with capital projects. And the report clearly advises members that there's a number of factors, not least the pandemic, Brexit, the war in Ukraine, and the mini-budget, all having, I think, an impact on the current financial position we find ourselves in. And construction inflation has escalated significantly since the last time we considered our capital plan. Very mindful of the fact that some of the tenders that we've recently taken out have been up to 30% higher than what was anticipated and what was agreed in January. That means that we're in a very difficult position. And of course, the capital plan is directly linked to our revenue position. So whilst there is a need to plug the shortfall, should I say, of 23.6 million, to do so through borrowing, we'd put increased pressure on the revenue side of that budget, which, as we all know, is under some significant pressure. And we know what we're facing following the updates provided with the medium-term financial plans that we recently considered through committee. So the recommendations before us, I think, I would never describe as satisfactory, because they are essentially seeing us reduce some of our expenditure in these areas. But I think it's also important to recognise what we are continuing to spend money on. And with £103.8 million set to deliver both the East End campus and the Western Gateway School, that's a significant proportion of our overall capital budget. There's also £96 million associated with tackling climate change in various forms in terms of capital investments. And again, a significant amount of our capital plan is focused on interventions which will hopefully provide enhancements for the citizens of the city, tackle fuel poverty, tackle some of the social ills that we know that exist. But I would not be as complacent as to say that this has not been incredibly challenging, not least for the administration and for officers in pulling this together. And I think I would also just conclude my remarks by saying that what we've seen particularly over the last few months with the volatility within the UK economy, some of which is a direct, well, can be directly attributed to some of the nonsense that we've seen in 10 Downing Street, has resulted in some significant impact on our ability to bring this forward timiously. And I think the challenge here is that even now, these figures will continue to fluctuate. Now, I hope that in six months' time, we might be in a more positive position when we are looking at inflationary rates and particularly construction inflation. But at this point in time, we need to make some difficult decisions in order to ensure that our capital plan is balanced and can be delivered. And we need to do that through this committee, through the discussion that we're about to have, and I'm sure debate that we're about to have, in making sure that we balance all of those. in making sure that we balance all of those various factors for the common good. And with all of that said, I will open it up to questions. And I can see Bailey McPherson, you've got a question and an amendment. I'll maybe come back to your amendment if that's all right. So question first, please. Thank you.
Just question. I could have firstly say I agree with much of what you've said there, Convena. And challenging, challenging for the administration, indeed challenging for the opposition. And as you know, I have concerns that we're briefing on Wednesday. That's the first time we've actually been able to speak to officers following the release of, as a collective, following the release of the papers which went out late. There's not a complaint. I know what happened at the end of last week. But and I'm not intending going on ad nauseam about that tonight. Because I'm not suggesting in any way that any rules were broken in relation to when the opposition were advised. The point, however, is if you get a briefing on a Wednesday for the committee the following Monday, if it's a revenue budget, you spend a significant amount of time speaking to officers about effects of particular options and potential cuts. And to be honest, much as I'm very grateful for the discussion I did have with senior finance officer on, I think, Thursday. Nonetheless, I would say in an informal manner, sharing this information with all members of the council at an early stage is very helpful. But I'll then, in our less long winded way, come to my actual question. In the reductions that are being recommended for approval tonight is a reduction in transport and infrastructure of two point three million. Now, I understand from an exchange with the city engineer that that would include the match funding. Well, it's not match, it's thirty percent funding of the replacement Magdalen Green footbridge. If these reductions are agreed tonight. Now, given that there's already been the initial stages of consultation with the community funded by Sustrans. And there has been a further bid for detailed design, again, where it's successful funded by Sustrans. Does this not mean that if we agree that cut in transport and infrastructure tonight, we cannot meet the thirty percent funding that we would be required to meet by Sustrans? Unless Transport Scotland and Sustrans agreed to change their rules, which at the moment mean seventy percent funded by them and thirty percent funded by Dundee City Council. And how does that place us in relation to successfully bidding for the next stage, which is a hundred percent funded? But would Sustrans not have concerns that they are being asked to fund something that the council can't actually meet its match funding obligations on?
Thanks very much for the question. And welcome to the executive director. So Robin.
Convena, apologies. My microphone's switched off. Bailey McPherson has highlighted the issue, but as members are aware, we intend pursuing this project. And in the first instance, as Bailey McPherson has highlighted, we are, we have submitted a bid with the hope that that can cover a hundred percent of the development, construction and design phases. Now, I think Transport Scotland and Sustran are aware of the financial pressures on local authorities across the country. And we are therefore seeking to secure the full funding for this project because it is an important project. We know it's one which elected members of all parties have welcomed. So we'll obviously keep the committee informed of progress on that. And it will take some time to conclude consultation, finalise designs and secure appropriate consents. And I think that gives us the opportunity to review the position with Sustran and Transport Scotland and hopefully maximise the external funding that we can secure. So we will keep the committee informed as matters progress.
Thanks very much, Robin. I think that's really helpful. I'll come back to you, Fraser.
Yeah, I'll not prolong this because obviously the hour is late and I'm grateful to Mr. Presswood for his response. The bottom line on it is on the current funding model that Sustrans have. Even if we're successful in the hundred percent that you can get for the design stage, we're taking away the ability of the council to provide the thirty percent funding that would be required for this project to actually ever succeed. Unless there is a change in the funding model from Transport Scotland and Sustrans. But I'll leave it at that, Convena. And obviously you'll come back to me when we reach the formal stage. Thank you.
I will indeed. Thank you. I've got a few questions coming in now, so I will just take them in the order that I see them. So councillor McHugh, Dorothy.
Thank you. I have a question relating to the proposed budget reductions and the integrated impact assessment. The impact assessment shows positive impacts on age and disability. And yet, proposed budget reductions include nine hundred and fifty thousand cut from social care provision accommodation for adults with learning disabilities. And social care strategic funding for older people and adults. Now, the impact assessment says that the the plan has positive impacts. But this impact assessment is not about the plan. It's about this report which proposes reductions to the plan. So I just can't understand how reductions of that magnitude in funding can have positive impacts for age and disability.
Yeah, thanks for the question. The plan before us is an update of the plan. This is it setting out how we intend to spend money for the next five years on our capital project. So the the qualities assessment is based upon the plan and the expenditure that's detailed. Now, we periodically review, I think the last time we reviewed that was at the start of this year. It is based upon the details that are contained within the plan. So there will inevitably be variance. And even though there's some reductions in terms of expenditure, what's very clear is that there is three hundred and eighty two million pounds being spent across the city on the priorities that we've set out. And again, in the challenging context, then that is still three hundred and twenty two million, sorry, three hundred and eighty two million pounds that we are spending. So that is the reason. But I'll ask Robert to come in and just kind of articulate from his point of view as executive director. Robert.
Thank you, Convena. I think you've probably set out, well, I think the important thing to note is there's no specific projects that have been taken out of the capital programme that you could look at doing a specific assessment for. So most of the changes relate to money that has been set aside. And we just talked a few minutes ago about match funding to facilitate projects. So that was one example. But most of the funding is there to look at what we can deliver. So there are no specific projects that will be removed. And when we look at what is being invested, the money is still being spent and it is moving between projects. So if you consider about services for young people, we're investing more specifically in a young school. We're ensuring that all of the projects that are in the pipeline can be delivered. And that will have a positive benefit in terms of the delivery of services and the continued delivery of services. There's no doubt that there is addition. If we had the money, we wouldn't be looking at reducing the programme that we were spending. So it's about the choices that we are making. But the investment, as you outlined, is largely a positive thing. And as I said, there's no specific projects that you can evaluate that are being removed that would have a negative effect.
Thanks, Robert. And I think it's really important to clarify, I suppose, I'm very conscious, we have got members of the press on the call as well. But even for the recording that goes out publicly, we're not spending less money. We are spending the exact same envelope of funding. The problem for us is that the envelope does not go as far as it did ten months ago because of construction inflation. So there isn't a cut in the value in terms of what we are investing. The cut is a result of the fact that the projects contained within the capital plan have increased dramatically because of factors out with our control. And I think it's really important just to set that as the kind of context. And I'll come on now. Councillor Duncan Craig, that's seconding Fraser's motion. So I'm going to come back to you if that's all right and go straight to Bailey Keenan's comment. Bailey Keenan.
Yeah, Convena, I have to somewhat agree with Bailey McPherson in relation to the timing of, you know, big decisions to be taken. But we'll lack a detail in which obviously Bailey McPherson's flushed out the one in relation to the footbridge. But there is so many other pieces of information that are missing. And just earlier in the meeting, you told someone that they should speak to officers and get detailed, answer to detailed questions in advance. So in trying to understand the unadopted footpaths, which we used to receive every year in a report that said, these are the ones that are likely to be done. I asked the question today and was told that there is two thousand sites on a spreadsheet. And they've got an ID number, but that ID number doesn't give me any indication of what that street reference is. So officers are still going to have to come back to me with the code that allows me to understand the system that they put on a spreadsheet. So as in more detail, I can understand, and no doubt every other councillor should understand about what this level of proposed budget reductions will mean within their ward. But I really question how the administration have come to these, given that we're going to cut four point one million pounds worth of flood defences from the airport. And we're putting a huge amount of public money into the airport. So it looks to me like we're not prepared to expect, look after an asset that they would know that there's potentially going to be a problem with. You know, there is going to be nine, there's huge money being spent year on year in subsidies to the airport. And there is going to be nine million pounds spent on the city's deal going into the airport. So to let it flood would seem silly because it's unlikely we'd be able to get the money to convert the fleet to sea plates. And then, you know, we declare it a climate emergency and look around and I haven't went into detail with the projects that are likely to be cut. But sustainable and low carbon projects to be cut at a time where we're declaring a climate emergency just seems ridiculous as well. So, you know, I've really got to question, when do we start joining things up? And is there need to be a bigger conversation than here's your papers, we've decided as a group. I'm sure you understand where the two thousand streets are that are not going to be getting any repair done to them. We send our individuals. That adopted pavements and unadopted pavements had a safety aspect built in it where we'd be looking at protecting our own employees that we send over there, whether it be a care worker, whether it be a cleansing worker, that were expected to walk on the streets and pavements that are unadopted. So, you know, I think the administrations just lost the plot. Nothing your days join up anywhere.
That sounded a bit more like a rant than a cohesive question, Bailey Keenan. But I'll respond nonetheless. I think first of all. Sorry, Bailey Keenan, I'm talking now. So please, if you could hold your comments. I think there's a couple of things that I would want to say in response, and then I'll also bring officers in. Let's be absolutely clear as to why we're in this position. It isn't the administration of this council that is deciding that construction inflation increases by thirty percent. It isn't the administration of this council that is in control of factors that are having an impact across every single council area in the whole of the UK. And it would be remiss of me not to mention that your own colleagues in administration, who I've spoken to very recently, are in a very similar position in having to review their own capital plans to make sure that they meet the envelope. So that there isn't the pressure on the revenue side of that budget that we are all equally concerned about. So that's the context for this conversation. It's also really important to recognise, and it's a failure, I think, of your comments there, to recognise where we're spending three hundred and eighty two million pounds. So whilst you might want to focus on some of these areas of spend that actually are not against specific projects at this stage, because they were set out as thematic funding to see what we could explore and deliver. The counter to that is that you pull the resource from named projects, from projects that are earmarked for delivery over the coming year or two. And I look forward to seeing your amendment, which you haven't notified me of yet, which suggests an alternative way forward. And now, if you don't have an amendment, then I think it makes a slight mockery of your comments this evening because you're clearly not offering an alternative. And my final comments before I bring officers in. Let's be really clear. There has been volatility at a national level that has meant that figures have fluctuated month on month, week on week, that have rendered this process incredibly difficult. So rather than complain, let's acknowledge and respect the fact that officers have worked tremendously hard to ensure that this report before us is as accurate as it can be, that it takes and recognises the current situation. And that it also recognises our collective aspirations for this city. And I certainly know that through the programmes, the projects that are detailed in here, we are very clear on what our priorities are. A core component of this is additional expenditure on first class educational premises. A core component of this is about how we're going to spend ninety six million pounds in addressing net zero and working that and embedding that in projects such as our new school development. So rather than taking a kind of piecemeal approach, we're embedding climate change into the projects that we are taking forward to ensure that the projects that we bring forward have climate change as part and parcel of the delivery of those projects. Now, you mentioned a couple of other things. At the timing of the committee reports, I think, let's be very clear in the context of what I've just set out, the reports were sent by email on Friday as per standing orders. And as Bailey McPherson has acknowledged, there are no rules breaking. They have been sent as timely as they could, in line with standing orders, in line with the agreement of this committee. So if you have an issue with them, then I look forward to you amending standing orders accordingly. Secondly, Dundee City Council and the opposition members of Dundee City Council receive committee papers ten days in advance of the committee. That is in stark contrast to most other local authorities in Scotland and many of which are Labour led. So rather than complain about the process, I think it's worth acknowledging that you're at an advantage in Dundee. Now, would I have loved to bring you early sight of these reports months and months in advance? Then, of course, it would have been fantastic to have that conversation. But circumstances do not allow that. And there needs to be a recognition of that situation. Now, I'm going to come to officers. I can see you've taken yourself off mute, Bailey Keenan, but I'm going to come back to you in a moment. Once I've asked officers just to come in on some of the points that you've made specifically in relation to things like the airport, for example. So I know that Ewan is on the call. Ewan, can I bring you in at this point just to clarify the situation with the expenditure that was referenced on the airport, please? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Convena. The airport situation for the flood defence work. Might actually refer to Robert Presswood, Robin Presswood on this one. He's a bit closer to it. But the situation is waiting on Scottish government announcement of next round funding. But I'll let Robin come in on that point.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Ewan. Yes, I've spoken to the city engineer just to get an updated position. And there will be a full report on the flood protection programme coming to the next city development committee, and that will give members more context. In terms of the specific proposals for the airport, the provision within the previous capital programme was for match funding against Scottish government funding. Now, cycle one of the flood prevention works is the current cycle that we're in. There has been significant cost overruns across the country. And that means that Scottish government isn't yet certain about when funding will be released for cycle two. So we think that will be a fairly significant delay in cycle two. And therefore, as officers, it's not inappropriate to push back the match funding at this stage until we have certainty over when the principal funding will be available from Scottish government. I do want to reassure members that there is no risk to the airport buildings. The engineers calculate that potentially it's a one in hundred year event before the runway might be flooded and required to close. It would be significantly greater than that, the likelihood of the buildings themselves being flooded. So there's no danger at this time of damage to the airport buildings.
Thanks very much for those points of clarity. Now, I'm going back to the chat function. So I see no further comments or questions. So I'll come to yourself, Bailey McPherson.
Thanks, Convena. I do have an amendment as indicated and very grateful if officers can circulate it at that point. Now, I'm very conscious time is wearing on, so I'll be as brief as possible. I would firstly say, Convena, I think there's a discussion to be I I would firstly say, Convenor, I think there's a discussion to be had not tonight regarding engagement on on this issue. I agree with you that no rules were broken, I said that myself. And I also would make the point, no one suggested that the administration is in some way responsible for construction inflation. The question is, how do you deal with the reduced amount you can do within, as you put it, the envelope of three hundred and eighty-two million? We have some concerns, we have a proposal, nothing's perfect. I fully accept that, my group fully accept that, nothing is perfect. But we feel very strongly that some of the reductions should at all costs be avoided in particular areas of one point six million in relation to social care capital projects, and point six million in relation to community generation, transport infrastructure, which I've already alluded to, parts of open spaces and so on. The 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 ones that we have a particular concern about are listed in our amendment. We have not included the issues around flood defences for exactly the reason that Mr. Presswood indicated earlier. However, you you can't find nine point one million by simply asking for some things to be saved. And we've taken the view that moving the 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 new plant for Dundee Ice Arena to later years post twenty twenty-eight is the more acceptable option. We realise that's not perfect, we do realise the age of the plant at the Ice Arena. We do realise it may be subject to the need for repair in the the lifetime of the current or the new capital plan. But the bottom line on this is it's about choices, and I think we all accept that. And we're of the view that issues like social care, unadopted footways, I had a key hand in increasing that as planning and transport conveners, it was then known, from two hundred thousand a year to point five of of a million back in two thousand and seven eight. And and I did so, I have to say, because an elderly lady came to my surgery, black and blue, from a fall she had on an unadopted footway. And the and that unadopted footway is no longer unadopted and but it didn't half bring to me in sharp focus the need to fund that area of expenditure. Our group fully accept that nothing is perfect here, Convenor. But we feel that what we're proposing is the fairest possible way to deal with the difficulties facing the capital plan in this current challenging environment, given the rate of construction inflation. And my colleague councillor Duncan is going to second me. Thank you, Convenor.
Thanks very much, Bailey McPherson. I'll respond in a moment, but I'll allow councillor Duncan to come in and second you. Craig?
Convenor, thanks, yeah. I mean, I'll be brief, basically echo what Fares has got to say. And no, in in brief, you know, nothing, nothing is ideal here. None of us would want to be in this situation. However, I think our proposals are are an improvement and would sort of mitigate the 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 worst of what needs to be done for a larger number of people. It would be regrettable to move the ice arena into later years. But as I say, I think it would achieve the effect of mitigating the effect of these tough choices on a larger number of people in the meantime.
Thanks very much. Just by way of some initial feedback, I suppose, and thank you, can I say, for your constructive feedback and the mature attempt, I suppose, to bring forward some suggestions that are alternatives to our own. I absolutely endorse the view that none of this is ideal for any of us. And whatever choices we had to make, they were always going to be challenging. On the substance, in terms of your amendment, I suppose the concern I do have is I'm aware that the Ice Arena does require these upgrades, and I might just ask officers to clarify in terms of the the nature of that and, you know, the hesitant use the word urgency, because I wouldn't want that to misrepresent. But certainly, the need for those upgrades to the plant. I think it's also important to say that when we look at some of the budgets that are proposed to be reinstated, some of these, again, I'll reiterate, are not set against specific projects. So reinstating the money doesn't mean that it's suddenly going to see a project reinstated. It means that there will be an attempt to look at the projects that could be delivered within it. And they aren't all earmarked for specific things at this point in time. And so can I perhaps just ask Neil to come in and comment specifically just for a point of clarification on the Ice Arena and the need for those works to be undertaken, please?
Thanks, Convenor. Thanks for the question. Yeah, so in terms of the Ice Arena, obviously, it's of a vintage over twenty years old. And in terms of significant bits of plant, there has been replacements to lighten done under the NDE efficiency programme and such like. But the refrigeration and other bits of plant have been repaired and had significant repairs. So it's now getting to the stage where we don't want to have any failures. And it's also age of plant and getting spare parts is becoming more and more difficult. So it's the accumulation of that over the the various elements and components that lead us to look at putting the the capital investment in at this stage rather than defer into later on.
Yeah, thanks for that clarification. I think on that basis, just to be clear on what my view is, I wouldn't endorse your amendment at this stage. And I think, you know, without mentioning the dreaded O-word, we wouldn't want to find ourselves in another situation where we're dealing with a failure of plant in one of our key assets run by leisure and culture Dundee. So on that basis, I don't think I can support you. But I will bring in other members who have other contributions to make. So Bailey Scott, Derek?
Thanks, Convenor. I'm I'm minded to support what Bailey McPherson has proposed. I have a lot of sympathy with the the arguments he's outlined there. I wanted to to say about my own involvement with this. I made contact with officers, I had meetings with with some, emailed others. But I got my last response just twenty minutes before the start of this meeting. And I've not really had the opportunity to to drill down further with officers on some of these things. So I I I agree with what Bailey McPherson and Bailey Keenan have said about the opportunity to properly consider these and the impact that they're likely to have. And for instance, on an issue such as the unadopted assets programme being dropped, that was a decision that was taken by the City Development Committee. And we changed, the City Development Committee changed it from the unadopted footways programme to the unadopted assets programme. And now if the if a politi's decision is being taken that we're dropping that altogether, then that really ought to come to the City Development Committee for a for a decision on that. So I do think more time needs to be spent looking at these things. I totally understand, though, the reason why it's being done because of the inflationary pressures that we're under. But like others have said, I I think if we'd had the information a bit bit earlier, then we would have had the full opportunity to to speak to officers about and and look at all the implications.
Yeah, thanks for your comments. I'm not going to repeat myself, but I think, you know, had we been in a position or officers been in a position where they could share detail in advance, I'm sure they would have rather done that as well. But fast-moving situation and clearly, we've done the best that we can in the circumstances and provided that information as per standing orders as well. I think Bailey Sawyers, you've got a comment and an amendment, so I'll I'll take it in that order, please.
Yeah, just very, very briefly, Convenor, and you've touched on this already, but I do find it highly ironic. The three members of the opposition who've raised issues about the issue of papers are the three members who are members of the previous administration who restricted access to the then opposition. So maybe they want to have a re-walk in the mirror and reflect on what they're actually saying.
Okay, thank you, Bailey Sawyers. As I always say, I'll defer to your superior knowledge and such things because you've been along around a lot longer than I have. So we'll come to your amendment as well, please.
Sorry, Convenor, should we? Should we not have a vote on Bailey McPherson's amendment first?
We probably should. Thank you very much for keeping me right. And so, again, for the reasons, sorry, I'll bring in Mr. Many.
Thank you very much, Convenor. As I understand matters, it appears that no elected member wishes to move support for the recommendations which are in the report because both of the amendments are described as such. In those circumstances, I would suggest that the best way to proceed would be to vote on one amendment against the other. And can I suggest that Bailey Sawyer's amendment is circulated? That could become the motion once it's seconded, and that could be voted on against Bailey McPherson's amendment.
Okay, thank you. That makes logical sense. So Bailey Sawyers?
Yeah, thanks. So if the motion could be circulated while I'm speaking, and I'm seeking indulgence, Convenor, if you could accept a verbal amendment to my written motion on two point one F, it should be Office for Budget Responsibility rather than Office of, as I've typed, that's just a typo in my part. I think the bottom line here is, as you've mentioned countless times, is we're spending the same amount of money, the three hundred and eighty-two million pounds that's been referenced, but we're getting a lot less for it. And I think officers, officers have to be, I suppose, politically impartial and neutral. And perhaps they can't get to the gist of where the actual problem is, but I think my motion does. And, you know, just, I'm going to be brief, given the hour, but I'll just give a couple of quotes. The Independent Resolution Foundation calculates that the trust government was responsible for about thirty billion pounds of the fiscal hole, which the Treasury puts at sixty billion pounds. So that's a billion and a half pounds for every day they were in our office. I mean, that's just, it's really quite remarkable that we could have had such an inept prime minister after the last inept prime minister carrying on. The Office for Budget Responsibility says, our twenty-six economic and fiscal outlook has been unusual in both the time it took to produce and the process leading to its publication. We started working this forecast on the twenty-ninth of July. And then goes on to say, eh, in sixteen weeks since then, we have produced seven forecast rounds under three prime ministers and three chancellors working towards three official forecast dates. As this final published forecast reflects, policies announced in five major fiscal statements since March. I mean, if you didn't read this stuff written down by sober economists, you just wouldn't believe it had happened. It's, if you'd written this as a script for In the Sick of It, I think they'd have thrown it back at you. Going on to Brexit. Brexit analysis, it states that reduced long-term productivity by four percent relative to remaining in the EU. Exports and imports will be around fifteen percent lower in the long run than if the UK had remained in the EU. New trade deals with non-EU countries will not have a material impact, and any effect will be gradual. And it just goes on and on in a similar vein. So I really think we have to analyse why we've got to where we are when our three hundred and eighty-two million pounds doesn't buy what we thought it would back in January. And the clear analysis is that we're in basically a failed economic state, I would go as far to say. And frankly, Brexit has been a huge part of that, as well as the disastrous trust quartet regime. And the only way we're ever going to get back into Europe, certainly if you believe what Keir Starmer says, because he doesn't want to go anywhere near there, is to have independence for Scotland. And in that, Convenor, I will move the motion or amendment, I'm not sure if it shows.
It's it's, we'll find out in a minute. That's a good point.
Mr. Many, I would advise this.
Thank you very much. For those comments, I'll just come straight to your secondor. So councillor Short?
Thank you, Convenor. And today, as the Dundee City Council APSY representative, APSY, of course, being the Association for Public Service Excellence, I received a briefing, which ultimately was the analysis on the impact of local authority frontline services based on this most recent budget. And I'd like to read to everybody just exactly what Mo Baines of the APSY Deputy Chief Executive said with regards to it. Ultimately, fiscal policy is a choice of any government of any political persuasion. But it is unlikely that this autumn statement will be warmly welcomed by the vast majority of UK councils. It is more likely to be much more muted response of it could have been worse. Like Bailey Sawyers, I'm very keen to see us being a small, independent nation where we can make these decisions based on the priorities of the people of Scotland. So I hope that you will join me and Bailey Sawyers in going for this amendment to the motion this evening. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Councillor Short, I'll come as no surprise that I'll wholeheartedly endorse the ones of both you and Bailey, Bailey Sawyers. And I think it's really important to recognise that there are, you know, huge challenges upon us right now. And through our ability to decide and make those decisions closer to home with the people that we represent in mind, then we can and should ensure that those decisions are made in Edinburgh rather than London. And with that, I'll move to the formal position, but I'll ask Roger just to clarify. So my intention would be to endorse the amendment, and I would suggest that's probably makes sense for that to be the motion, but Roger?
Thank you very much, Convenor. Before we move to the vote on this, could I ask that once the vote is taken, we pass to the chief executive who wishes to explain to the committee the business which we must transact this evening, given the time?
Yep, absolutely. So we'll do the vote first, please?
Thank you. So this is in relation to the report on the capital plan. The motion in the name of Bailey Sawyers, seconded by councillor Short, is circulated. The amendment in the name of Bailey McPherson, seconded by councillor Duncan, is also circulated. I'll now pass to Mr. Wardle to take the roll call vote. Thank you.
Sorry, Roger, my my audio went there. Could you repeat that, please?
Certainly, Convenor. The motion in the name of Bailey Sawyers, seconded by councillor Short, is circulated. The amendment in the name of Bailey McPherson, seconded by councillor Duncan, is also circulated. And I'll now pass to Mr. Wardle to take the roll call vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before I take the vote, could this possibly ask Bailey Sawyers to repeat what the adjustment was to two point one F of his amendment, please?
Yes, it was, it should be Office for Budget Responsibility rather than Office of Budget Responsibility.
Thank you very much. Now proceeding to the vote, to Convenor?
Motion.
Councillor Anderson?
Motion.
Lord Provost?
Motion.
Deputy Lord Provost?
Motion.
Bailey Dawson?
The motion.
Councillor Ilnackla?
Motion.
Councillor Flynn?
Motion.
Councillor Hunter?
Motion.
Councillor Lynn?
Motion.
Bailey Roberts? Bailey Roberts. Thank you. Councillor Rome?
The motion.
Thank you. Bailey Sawyers?
Motion.
Councillor Short?
Motion.
Councillor Smith?
Motion.
Councillor Tolland?
Absolutely, motion.
Ewan Keenan?
Amendment.
Councillor Cookshank?
Amendment.
Councillor Finnegan?
Amendment.
Councillor McKeer?
Amendment.
Councillor McCarvin?
Amendment.
Councillor Malone?
Amendment.
Councillor Shears?
Amendment.
Bailey Wright?
Amendment.
Bailey McPherson?
The amendment.
Councillor Coleman?
The amendment.
Councillor Creighton? Councillor Creighton? Yeah, that was amendment, yeah. Okay, councillor Duncan?
Amendment.
Finally, Bailey Scott?
Amendment.
Yeah, that's fifteen for the motion and thirteen for amendment, the motion's carried.
Thanks very much. Willie, before we move on, I will ask the chief executive to come in. Greg?
Yeah, thanks, Convenor. So so based on the time, my advice to committee this evening will be there are a number of items that we require to consider. And those would be item number ten, the Dundee Fairness Action Plan. Item number twelve, the corporate data storage. Item number thirteen, the wifi in primary schools in early years. Item number fifteen, the public bodies' climate commitments. And item number seventeen, the remainder of the other four items, I believe, Convenor, can be deferred to the next P and R committee.
Thanks very much for that, and I would wholeheartedly endorse, and I would propose that we do take them in that order. And given the time sense of nature of these items, ten, twelve, thirteen, fifteen and seventeen, Given the time sense of nature of these items, 10, 12, 13, 15 and 17, I think it's also prudent to suspend standing orders only specifically until we've dealt with these items. The remaining items will be carried forward to the next P and R with your agreement. So can I have your agreement on that, please?
Agreed.
Thank you very much. Okay, Willie, so we'll move to item 10, please.
Yeah, item 10, for his Dundee Fairness Action Plan and Local Child Poverty Action Report, you'd ask to agree the recommendations.
Again, clearly, this is a really important report and contains a significant amount of incredibly detailed information, but information nonetheless that is very helpful as we consider the approach that we're taking, the policy directions that we need to implement, and also where we need to focus our energies. And there has been a tremendous amount of work in this area, and I know many of you know it firsthand. You've been involved in some of it, for example, the Fairness Leadership Panel and the engagement that we've had with organisations across the city has been really important. There's also been significant work through the Dundee Partnership and within our local communities with additional funding being deployed to support people. And I think more than ever, this report against the backdrop of what we're discussing, the extremely challenging economic conditions, the cost of living crisis, is all the more important for us to recognise how vital it is that we don't lose sight of the significant challenges that exist in every single one of our communities. And I know we don't, but I think this is an opportunity and this report is a reminder of the scale of some of those challenges and how much work is being undertaken to seek to address that, to seek to support people in their time of need. So with that said, I will come to councillor's question. So Bailey McPherson.
Just a very brief one, convener. I concur with everything that you've said, and there's a lot of very useful detail in the Dundee Fairness Action Plan. My question's really about this, the targets, and as it says in 4.1.7, we have set ambitious goals in relation to these. I was just really wondering if officers, and the hour is late, so it might just be useful to have this circulated. But I'd really be interested in officers' take on the targets for 2324 that are alluded to, and I think it's 4.1.2. Are we confident that we can actually meet these? We're faced with the biggest cost of living crisis, frankly, since the 1970s, if not before. And I'm just really wondering what the impact of that will be. Now, as I say, I'm aware of the late hour, so I'm not expecting a detailed reply from officers. But I think some update from officers on targets going forward and what is actually genuinely going to be achievable would be very useful.
Thanks very much for the question. I shall bring in the Head of Chief Executive Service, Andrea.
I'm sorry, thank you very much for the question. So on targets, we have set ambitious targets. We have looked at our past performance and tracked that forward. But we do appreciate that we don't yet know the impacts of the cost of living crisis fully. We have seen significant improvements over the past couple of years, particularly with some of the policies that have taken locally and nationally. So things have improved. But we do appreciate that, you know, they could go backwards over the next few years. I'm happy to give you a bit more detail about how we've set some of the specific targets and give you feedback on the national targets that have been set as well.
That's great. We appreciate it. I'll not prolong it. Thanks, convener.
Thank you very much, Fraser. Councillor Crookshank, Georgia.
Thanks very much, convener. Can I start by welcoming this report and thanking the commissioners led by Jackie Close for their tremendous work in exposing such deep-seated and deeply important issues of health and wealth inequality in our city? The time and effort dedicated, plus the knowledge and experience shared are of enormous value to our work as a council. No one underestimates the severity of the challenges we face right now, compounded by Brexit and now Covid and now the war in Ukraine. But the prevailing undercurrent beneath all of this is austerity, a political choice, packaged up by the Tories and handed down by the Scottish government. We talk so often about what our city can afford. Well, I see we can't afford to let this slide any longer. The gap between the rich and the poor is wider than it's ever been and widening further still. We live in one of the wealthiest countries in the world by lots of little solace when it's also one most unequal. You yourself, councillor Alexander, observed that these are symptoms of national issues which can't be resolved in these city chambers alone, and you're exactly right about that. That's exactly why we need a neighbour government which can marshal the wealth and resource of the UK to make it a better, fairer and stronger country for everyone. Then we'd be able to fully support the admirable work being done to tackle child and household poverty in Dundee. In good faith, I don't believe any of us in any party stood for election just to manage Dundee's decline. We all want to see our city grow and prosper, but cut, cut, cut have been the watchwords of the last 12 years. But now our budget has been cut through the bone and to into the marrow, and it's gone too far for far too long. We have terrific people working across the council who want to get this right for Dundee. So whether it comes from council reserves from Holyrood or from Westminster, we need urgent support now to tackle the real world problems highlighted in this report. After all, the Fairness Commission isn't an academic exercise, it's a clarion call to do something about it. It's about the society our children and grandchildren will grow up in and they learn, and how they learn, where they work and how we look after our most vulnerable in our community. The crisis is happening now, the cost of living crisis. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments, councillor Crookshank. Certainly agree with some of them. I think it's really important to recognise some of the work that we have undertaken. And again, there has been unanimous support, so including the provision or the rollout of nearly £3 million of funding, Fuel Well Scheme, the Fuel Well 3 scheme, the support for advice agencies, the ongoing support of more than £40,000 per week to our food ladders and Food Network, and all of that on top of some Scottish initiatives that have been described as game changers for poverty, including the Scottish Child Payment and the announcement recently that that is set to double free school meals, and a whole host of other measures which I think we can all unanimously agree do have a positive impact. But there's always more to do, and I think this report makes that abundantly clear. You'll never hear me resting on my laurels or being complacent about the nature of the crisis that's unfolding before our very eyes and the fact that we do need more resources. And I think I've been very public in calling for those resources, and I won't stop in asking everybody who will listen that we need more resources to support our city at this time of need. And I would welcome cross-party support in those calls as well. So thank you very much for those comments. I will come to councillor Short next, please.
Thank you, convener. Just this last week, I was involved in two events and listened to very, two very influential speakers who operate in Scotland. One was David Duke from Street Soccer, and the other was Peter Kelly, who is from the Poverty Alliance, which many will know actually facilitate living wage. And last week was Living Wage Week. And what they both said was, if you're just waking up to the cost of living crisis, then where have you been for the last 12 years? This isn't anything new. And for a number of people, especially across the city, it's now at the point that it's a cost of survival crisis. And I've said previously that fiscal policy is about priorities. And as a city, we do prioritise, and we see it in this report, and we see it from the Scottish government in the form of the £25 per child payment. And these are fiscal decisions that are made. We're also making very first-hand decisions in this city, working with others, and are doing very much to change lives through the Scottish Social Security. So if we talk about supporting, then we support where we can. But ultimately, we should stop mitigating, and mitigation is what we continuously do. And if we could stop mitigating, then perhaps we can look to doing some more of the things that we talked about in the previous report. So I think it's fantastic that we have a very focused and connected city with regards to looking after those that are the most vulnerable. But again, it's deplorable that it's happening in this day and age. And anybody who watched the Brian Cox report last week will agree that we shouldn't be going backwards, we should be going forwards, and this city should be ambitious, just like this country is, and we should be independent.
Thanks very much for your comments, councillor Short. And again, I think there's a lot in there of substance, particularly just thinking about the work that we've been undertaking on the cost of living in particular. There's no other comments on this, so can I take this report as agreed, please? Thank you very much. Now move on to item 12, Willie.
Yeah, thank you, convener. Item 12 is the Corporate IT Data Storage Report, you'd ask to agree the proposals.
Hopefully self-explanatory. Any questions, comments on this? No, can I take this as agreed? Thank you very much. Now, I'm conscious that on item three, I did say we'd take it in this order, but councillor Shears, we did agree that we'd take this last, I think. Roger, you put your hand up and taken it down, so I think I've stolen your thunder, apologies. So we will move to item 15 next, and I'm sorry if you aren't following where we are, just put your hand up and I'll clarify. But item 15 is what we're dealing with next.
Yeah, thanks. Item 15 is Public Bodies Climate Change Duty's annual report, this is for noting.
Yeah, I think this is obviously a very substantive report, again, on a very important issue to all of us, particularly given the challenges that we've seen across the world with the climate. It's important to highlight a couple of things within the report. The carbon footprint of the council is continuing to decrease, and I think that can only be a good thing. It's reduced by 50% since the baseline in 2007/08, and I hope that we can continue at that kind of pace to drive down our carbon footprint and drive up our reliance on more sustainable and renewable sources. There's been significant investment across the city from street lighting to external wall insulation, to solar panels, EV infrastructure, et cetera, et cetera. And all of that is part of our wider mission to ensure that we are doing all that we can to tackle climate change in the city. And I think one other thing I would just like to mention before I come to comments or contributions from members of the committee is the incredible work by a very small team in the council, what they've managed to achieve in such a short period of time. And just a few days ago, Dundee was named as a global climate leader. Some of you may have seen this press release. For those that didn't, we were recognised as one of 122 cities across the globe who are taking bold leadership on environmental action and transparency. And that was due to a number of factors, including the work that we've done, such as the participatory budgeting model that was recently launched to involve our communities in that decision-making process as well. So with all that said, I'll bring in contributions. So Bailey Keenan.
Thanks, convener. Convener, I know the reduction in 2% of carbon footprint over the year, you know, which is to be welcome. But I wonder if officers have, or can provide us with some level of, where are we in relation to our carbon footprint? What are the ones that we need to tackle so as that we as councillors have a better understanding or can at least question, why ain't we doing a project like this? Especially when, you know, we're bringing forward other areas at council such as a £750,000 investment in our communities with the point of view of looking for energy efficient things. And clearly, we would want to mimic them within council if they come up with really smart ideas. But it would be good to have an understanding of the activities that we do. What are the, what are the, what are the carbon drivers for us? And how best can we as councillors address that moving forward? At the moment, I have no understanding as to whether the community centre in Adler has got a huge carbon footprint. You know, it's something that we'd want to keep up in, like other community centres. But I have no idea as to whether we need to do something there that would market much more energy efficient and reduce its carbon footprint.
Thanks very much, Bailey Keenan. There's obviously a wealth of information in the two reports that we have tonight on climate change. And if there's more detail or more specific explanation that's required, I'm sure officers will be happy to provide that after the meeting. I know we've got Brian, who is the leader for our climate change team on the call. I think I can't see him, but I think, oh, there you are, Brian. I think the other thing I would make a plug for, just on the back of your comments, Bailey Keenan, is the elected member training that has been rolled out across Scotland. And I did previously circulate some of this information. I've undertaken that training as a number of my administration group have as well. And I think it's really worthwhile that we all continue to understand and learn on this agenda because it's incredibly complex and sometimes the wealth of information that's been thrown our way is difficult to comprehend. And I'm sure Brian would be more than happy to provide additional information on that training so that all elected members were able to do that and enhance their scrutiny of these types of reports. But Brian, do you want to come in on the report or provide the information perhaps after the meeting? Thanks.
Yeah, just very briefly, just as relates to the first point, our buildings are by far and away our most intensive element of carbon emissions. So anything we can do to reduce emissions from our portfolio will make a big difference. That being said, it is right in terms of the data that we currently have in terms of each building, and that's what we're currently doing at the moment. We are undertaking a carbon budget for each council service. And within each of those carbon budgets, we've identified all the buildings that that service is responsible for. And we can put in the data together to map the emissions from those buildings. And then from that, we will have a better picture to target our resources to the priority areas against those buildings that we can do something about and we can reduce the emissions from. Just, and then on the latter point, the improvement service do run periodic elected member training, specifically for elected members across Scottish local authorities, and I'm more than happy to get in touch with them and get them to put out an email to all councillors in Dundee City Council.
Thanks very much, Brian. That's incredibly helpful. I'll come to councillor Anderson next.
Thank you, convener. I'm not going to make a speech. I'm just going to comment as someone who was in a previous local authority prior to being elected in Dundee and say, this is a fantastic report. It's not just full of good intentions, it's full of absolutely detailed, specific, constructive information. I was so impressed when I read it, and I'm not surprised that we've been recognised as being one of a very few number of cities who are doing incredible work. So just to congratulate the team and please book me on the training.
Excellent. Thank you very much, councillor Anderson, and thanks for those positive comments. I'm sure Brian will share them with the wider team as well. No other comments on this, so can I take this item as agreed, please? Thank you. We'll move on to item 17.
Yeah, item 17, for his accommodation for adults with specification requirements, the Langlands Street project, you'd ask to agree the terms of the note.
Again, very similar to the report that we considered or the note we considered last month and something that I think we'd all broadly endorse. So I see nobody with any note of dissension or, sorry, apologies, an error popped up on the screen. No comments on this, so can this be agreed? Thank you very much. So that will take us back to item 13, which will be the last item we consider tonight. Councillor Shears, Pete, if you want to drop off at this point. Thank you very much for your participation.
Oh, dear. Thank you.
Cheers. Okay, Willie. Okay, so this report is just, sorry, let me pull up my notes, is the wifi in primary schools and early years establishment. So again, hopefully self-explanatory. Is there any questions, comments on this specifically? Nope. Can this be agreed? Thank you very much. All just to clarify, so that means the remaining items that will be carried forward are items nine, 11, 14 and 16. Everything else we managed to get through, thank you for your participation, and I shall look forward to seeing you all very soon. Have a good night. Take care.
Good night. Thank you.
Thank you.